Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council. With the clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Landman? I see her here.
You here?
Yes. Councilmember Dibala?
Present.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Present.
Councilmember Gilbert? Councilmember Hanzak?
Present.
Councilmember Weselak? And Mayor Circe?
Here. So as you all can see, tonight, we are convening a virtual meeting due to the fact that many of us are in Salt Lake City participating in the National League of Cities conference. And so we appreciate everyone's flexibility as we are navigating the virtual space. I do just want to remind my, remind my colleagues that because we are all virtual this evening, any votes will occur via roll call. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. Um. Pull up my agenda. So just quickly going through the agenda for this evening. Tonight, we have a number of presentations. The first is the Council Compensation Committee Final Report. Next is a new AV bikeways update, followed by the financial forecast preliminary results about Ractellus and the community and council budget survey results. We also have three work sessions, I'm sorry, three voting items this evening. The first item is the second reading ordinance awarding a contract for rent stabilization study. The second item is the second reading ordinance approving the use of unassigned reserves to fund immigrant support services, followed by the resolution adopting the FY twenty six, twenty twenty six legislative priorities. We will then have a work session later this evening on the council budget priorities. As a reminder, on Wednesday, November the twenty sixth, the city council will not meet. Thursday, November the twenty second, Thanksgiving Day, city offices and facilities are closed Thursday through Sunday for the Thanksgiving holiday. On Monday, December the first, the council, the city council will meet in an administrative function related to the city manager's evaluation. That meeting will start at six P M. As a reminder, administrative function sessions are closed to the public. On Wednesday, December the third, the city council meeting will start at six thirty, not seven thirty. Because we will begin with a special meeting with the District Twenty legislators at six thirty. We will then have convened in our normal work session at seven thirty. And we will have two work sessions that evening, the council budget priorities and an update on a plan to address unlawful restricted covenants. On a Wednesday, December the tenth, the city council will have a administrative function section, session in regards to the city manager's evaluation, and that is at six thirty. Again, administrative function sessions are closed to the public. And on Wednesday, December the tenth, the city council will meet at its regular time of seven thirty in the auditorium. We will have two presentations that evening. The first is the Housing and Community Development Annual Report. The second is the Arts and Humanities Committee Annual Report. And then we will have two voting sessions. The first is the resolution adopting the FY twenty twenty seven budget priorities. And the second is the resolution providing for the city council winter recess, which will be from December the eleventh, twenty twenty five, through January the thirteenth, twenty twenty six. And so with that, um, we are going to move into public comments on voting items. Do we have any public comments? And just as a reminder, because we are virtual tonight, because the meeting is taking place on Zoom, commenters were required to sign up in advance. And the signup deadline was extended to seven P M this evening. So do we have any comments on voting items?
Pardon me. Yes, Tom Gagliardo should be joining us in a moment to comment. Mr. Gagliardo, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I had my microphone off. I provided each of you by email just a short time ago with more extensive remarks on the topic that I'm about to address. They relate to the fact that the mayor shut down Councilmember Schlegel last week claiming that his discussion or his attempt to discuss the relative merits of the request for proposal regarding a consultant on rent stabilization was in violation of the city code. I'm just going to read what I wrote. I don't see anything in section seven point oh eight, point oh six oh cited by the mayor that prohibits or restricts the council from having a public discussion of the relative merits of the R S P and Urban Institute proposals. While section A provides, quote, "The city council shall by ordinance duly enacted approve all expenditures exceeding fifty thousand dollars or more." It is at a minimum a stretch to say that this provision means the council is prohibited or restricted from questioning, considering, and judging whether bid requirements have been met and/or a presumptively tentative award was made, quote, "in the best interests of the city." It doesn't make sense that the council has the authority to vote whether to fund a contract but can't discuss why a contract should be awarded to a particular bidder. Isn't the discussion fundamental to deciding whether a tentative contract award should be funded? Point number two. Nor do I see anything that reserves to a staff selection panel the right to award a contract. There is, however, a provision, it's in code section seven point oh four point oh three oh, that authorizes the city manager to promulgate rules and regulations. I've not seen a copy of such rules, couldn't find such rules on the city website or anywhere else. So if they exist, I would be, I would appreciate being informed of that. Three, section seven point oh eight oh, point oh six oh provides "A register of proposals shall be prepared containing the name of each offerer, the number of modifications received, if any, and a description sufficient to identify the item offered." "The register of proposals shall be open to public inspection only after a contract award." "If you award the R S P contract tonight, then those documents must be made available to Tacoma Park residents at a minimum." Four, could or should have the rent stabilization contract been awarded using the professional services award process set forth in section seven point oh eight, point oh seven oh? Professional services means, and I'm quoting from the code, "personal services of members of a licensed or otherwise recognized provision, excuse me, profession, including but not limited to accountants, architects, attorneys, auditors, engineers, medical practitioners, surveyors, information technology support providers, and the like." Madam Mayor, with all respect, you were wrong. Please have that discussion tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments on voting items?
Yes, well, no. Next, we have a general public comment, excuse me, a general public comment from Paul Hubner.
Correction. Hi, Jesse. Can you hear me, folks? Okay, in case I can see your nod on your head. So good evening, Paul Hubner, Ward Three. I come before you to again request that you table the contract with R S G consultants until there has been a more thorough discussion of this consultant and the other three. I ask this in light of the recent financial forecast of our city manager. On the very first page of his executive summary, we can clearly see at the bottom of the page that the city has approved budget deficits of one million, four hundred sixty nine thousand, six hundred and sixty two dollars in FY twenty five, of two million, one hundred and seventy two thousand, eight hundred and sixty six dollars in FY twenty six, and a projected deficit of two million, four hundred and seventy two thousand, two hundred and sixty five dollars in FY twenty seven. The current proposal, the current proposal is to spend some thirty one percent or twenty six thousand dollars over the budgeted amount that was eighty five thousand dollars for the consultant. I know things are different in government than in general and than in commerce, general commerce, but this overage in the midst of a year of Doge layoffs, shutdowns, and massive sufferings in our community is just a little too much to handle. Why can't the Department of Housing and Community Development do the work it was designed and paid to do? They already subcontract some three hundred thousand dollars to Montgomery County to do their housing inspections also under their purview. Now they further advocate responsibility to live within the council-approved budget. How will you ever install fiscal discipline when you routinely approve over expenditures in the midst of deficit over deficit over deficit? You must require this department to do their job lest you lose control of the entire budget process. Thank you very much.
Sorry. Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have Andre Mershon to speak, have a general.
Yes, I'm just calling in to voice my support for the bike lanes that I see going up or the what will be discussed tonight with the bike lanes on New Hampshire Avenue. I appreciate that the city is working towards better transportation options on New Hampshire Avenue. That's a rough corridor to be a walker or a biker in. And I'm pleasantly surprised to see the city making progress on that. The city is also making progress on a number of other fronts on bicycling infrastructure. And I appreciate those efforts and support them wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
That's it.
Thank you. Do we have any council comments this evening? Okay, so if everyone could just raise, perfect, raise your hand and that way I will know that you would like to speak. Councilmember Weselak?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I apologize for my tardiness. It was busy, busy night for the Weselak household, but I am here now. And I don't think I have any further comments. Thank you.
Great. Next, Councilmember Hanzak?
Good evening, everyone, and hello to everyone in Salt Lake City. I am back here in Tacoma. I'm looking forward to hearing what you guys are learning at the, at the conference. I just wanted to share two, two quick things. One is, I had the opportunity again to attend the Long Branch Business League meeting this past week that happens monthly. And one of the reasons I made a point of doing that this month is because the Montgomery County Planning Board members were there along with other people from our business community and other stakeholders that were interested in the upcoming East Silver Spring Plan. And for those who haven't become familiar with that plan, there have been numerous opportunities, which I'm pleased about, for, for many different stakeholders in our community to feed in, including some of our specific requests to make sure that they were able to target our Spanish-speaking community. And we also have a lot of Spanish-speaking business owners, among others. Unfortunately, I wish there had been more of our small businesses present at this meeting. I just wanted to share that with you. Only about three or four of our business owners themselves were able to attend this meeting, which is unfortunate. It kind of shows just how hard-pressed our businesses are because I know this kind of meeting is really, really, really important. And I know that the business owners know that. It's just very hard to get away from their businesses at any time of day because the budgets are tight and they don't have extra personnel. So, but what I wanted to share is they gave some early feedback on where they're at. First of all, they're not planning to finalize their plan until April. That's been a delay. I forget what it was scheduled for before, but it's been pushed back a little bit. And so there are still opportunities to weigh in. And I also just wanted to share one of the big takeaways I had from this meeting from those that were present and those speaking on behalf of our small business owners and from the findings that the the planners have had so far talking to our business owners, which is that the group of business owners is very, very eager to get some support from either the county or the city or whoever is able to support them in putting together very, very quickly, if possible, a sense of what direction of travel they would like to go on creating a community-owned business improvement district of some sort. I'm using those words for lack of better language, but there have been a number of analyses looking at these topics, but nothing specific to the long branch area yet. And they're really eager to get that kind of support. So if anyone has ideas for how they might move in that direction, they're very eager to hear from you. And then also December thirteenth is the Mercado in the Winter Mercado in the Long Branch area, and I hope, I hope that people can come out and support some of our local businesses. It will be in front of El Gavilan in El Golfo. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak and Councilmember Dibala.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to all the residents who came to the budget forum. It was great to hear you all and to who filled out the questionnaires for the city, which we'll be talking about later tonight. I am in Salt Lake City at the N L C, and what I've learned today already is two things. One is that there is an A I tool specifically for local governments to help design ordinance resolutions, proclamations, et cetera. So that's kind of interesting. And I also had an opportunity to talk to the mayor of Broadview, Illinois, who has had, shall we say, a lot of firsthand experience recently in dealing with federal enforcement issues. So I can talk to people about that when I get back. I do have a, an N L C board meeting tonight. And so I'll hang in as long as I can, but I might have to leave early. And then I will absolutely watch the rest of the meeting on tape and ask any questions of other council members about stuff, stuff they might have mentioned that I won't be able to respond to if I'm, if I'm, if I'm not at the whole meeting here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Schlegel?
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. And thank you to my colleagues who are representing the city in Salt Lake City. I, I wanted to mention, thank you to Mr. Mershon for, for his support of the bike lanes on New Hampshire Avenue. And I'm a, as a biker myself, I, I study these things closely. I think that in addition to having these dedicated bikeways on, on significant arteries, it may be that it is time to begin thinking about a paradigm shift where we begin to welcome bikes as co-users of our streets themselves and using sharos and training drivers to slow down within our neighborhood streets. And not necessarily to feel that we have to continue always fully separating cyclists from cars. I say this because that's the way it goes in cities in Europe where bike, bike users increase in numbers. And the drivers begin to realize that they're not the kings of the road. So I'm not saying that to oppose either of the bike lanes under consideration, but, but just to emphasize that over the long term, we may be wanting to shift our paradigm. I really appreciated the opportunity with many residents to have the help of staff from Public Works yesterday as well as Grants Manager Patty Malin for showing us all the work that was done at the end of Psycho Mill Road. It was a really effective project and actually promising for other areas of the city potentially. The question of the, where the boundary is in Tacoma Park continues. I think it's not resolved yet, but the charter says it's on the far side of Lower New Hampshire Avenue, so I'm interested in seeing that resolved and I appreciate staff help in reviewing that since it's a question of where our law enforcement extends. Thank you to all the survey respondents. Really appreciate your involvement and for your participation in the budget forum as well. I really appreciate Mr. Gagliardo's raising the legal questions earlier. I myself am not a lawyer, so I, I wouldn't claim to be an expert on these things. But it does seem to be that we should pause and, and make sure that if we have the right to have a full discussion, we've done that. I did review my notes and see that when the scope was developed earlier this year for the rent stabilization review, it was assumed in my notes that there would be more opportunities to discuss the possible contract. And I wrote in September, of course, it's been pushed back now. So I will talk more about that later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Landman?
Thank you very much. Just very briefly, I wanted to say that I appreciated very much the staff taking the time to tour the other major bikeway project that is on our agenda for potential support from the legislature this year. That's the Metropolitan Branch Trail. And that both it and the, and the one that we just, that we're going to be discussing tonight, the new avenue bikeway. Each of them is a very worthwhile project and each of them has a really substantial price tag attached to it, over three million dollars in each case. And, and that doesn't detract at all from their benefit to us. And I also noted after my conversation with the city manager this week that we have over a hundred proposals that have been proposed to the city for traffic calming and sidewalks in the city this year. And I think that these, and all of those are projects that make our city more pedestrian-friendly and safe, all of which is very worthwhile. And they all, all of those things contribute to our climate friendliness because anytime you take cars off the road, you also reduce emissions and make us healthier too. So we are going to be facing difficult decisions about environmental benefits and trade-offs, financial trade-offs, and it's going to be a tough year for budget. So I think it's great that we are thinking about, you know, looking to the state to help address some of the potential costs of those bike, bike path issues. And I think it's gonna, it's gonna be a tough year for us financially as we try and weigh some of those of those traffic calming opportunities as well. And it's all good and it's all tough decisions that lie ahead for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Weselak, your hand is raised?
I apologize. I'm gonna add just one quick one since my earlier one was already pretty short. That I'd be remiss if I didn't give a huge thank you to the folks that made sure, made last night's Ward Six Public Safety Meeting go so successfully. It was, it was a really great meeting, great, great conversation. So a big thank you to the Police Department, Chief Dibala, and Captain Evans, who did a lot of the scheduling but wasn't there in person. Big thanks to City TV, who made it possible for folks to be present as well as online. And it was really great that we were able to participate in both of those ways. And thanks to the residents that participated and listened. It was a really great conversation. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Weselak. I just want to confirm that we see no more hands. Okay. Well, I just want to say thank you to everyone that provided comments this evening. Mr. Gagliardo, I respectfully disagree with your assessment. There were certain aspects of code that you highlighted. Um there were certain aspects of code that you highlighted, but not others that are really prevalent and really important for this discussion. So for example, um in section um D receipt of proposals, it states that no proposal shall be handled. So as to permit disclosure of the identity of any offerer or the contents of any proposal. To competing offerers during the evaluation process. Right? Um and so that is important. Um and that's the reason why um uh proposals are not made available. Um for the public generally until after a contract um award has been made. And so the discussion or for council to have. An open debate regarding the merit of the various proposals that were received specifically. Disclosing the content of those proposals could be in violation because we would still be in the evaluation process. An award has not been made. Um additionally, in section F. Um uh offers shall be accorded fair and equal treatment with respect to any opportunity for discussion. Or and revision of proposal and such revisions may be permitted after submissions and prior to award. For the purpose of atta- obtaining the best and final offers. Um that means if council is deciding or trying to um evaluate the merit. And review of each of the proposals that were made, um then and if there was any additional request for information that is asked. That would be something that would have to be provided to all of the offerers. Um again, um in section G, the award shall be ma- uh made to the responsible offerer. Whose proposal is determined to be the most advantageous to the city, taking into consideration price and evaluation factors. Set forth in the request for proposals. And as was discussed last week. Um council members were raising the point of uh proximity or locality in which um. Uh some one of the firms um has has experience in, that was not. Um a factor that was noted in the request for proposals. So so again, I stand firm. In my assessment of what is appropriate and as I stated uh last week. Council members have the ability to um vote against an award. Council members have the ability to share their general concerns regarding um um uh the staff's review of proposals. But council members should not be, because we were not a part of the evaluation panel that was outlined in the request for proposal. Uh council members should not be in an open forum debating the content and merits of proposals that were made. Especially if they are in a uh if the criteria that is used is not the criteria that was communicated in the request for proposal. And I feel really strongly about that as someone in my other life has had to manage over one hundred million dollars in federal contracts. Um so the other things that are happening, I want to um thank the Mills on Wheels. Uh uh for their I had an opportunity, um Councilmember Dabala, Westlick and Gilbert. Um was there as well um to celebrate the volunteers of Mills on Wheels and have a fantastic lunch. Um which was great. Um so I want to thank um the leadership on Mills on Wheels and all of the volunteers for. Putting in so much hard work to make sure um that people are um not just receiving good nutritious food. Um but having that personal connection to to folks within our community. Um I also uh had the opportunity on Monday to testify before the. Um Montgomery County um delegation uh to talk about our legislative uh priorities in twenty twenty six. Um and so I appreciate the opportunity to at least provide um the delegates within Montgomery County a heads up in terms of. What are some of the things that the city of Tacoma Park is really interested in seeing them move forward? One of the things that I thought was actually very beneficial is the fact that um we were in alignment. With um other jurisdictions that were testifying as well. Um the county brought up immigration. Um the county exec mentioned SNAP, um uh the other municipalities, Rockville, Gaithersburg, all talked about. MML and transportation issues. Um so we are in good company. Um and in in quite alignment with the legislative priorities that we will be voting on later. Um but I do just want to share um that that was a really great opportunity. Um also, just as a quick heads up, um Senator Will Smith had an event that was scheduled for tomorrow night. That event has been postponed. Um and so uh we will uh let folks know or he will spread the word. Um as um as that event is rescheduled, um I did unfortunately, I missed the uh Ward Six. Um uh Public Safety Meeting, um but I did attend uh the panel discussion. That Senator Smith hosted um as it relates to housing. Um and housing in in our area and included Secretary um Jake Day. Um who manages housing and um community development for the state. And um lastly, I'm just trying to make sure I'm not missing anything. We talked about. Okay, okay. Oh, also, um s- uh Councilmember Landman and myself. Um also had an opportunity to participate in the um MML meeting with the superintendent. Um gosh, what day was that? It's all a blur. I want to say, was it yesterday? I think it was yesterday. Um and um to learn about uh. I think someone is unmuted, okay. Um to learn about all of the different things that's happening in MCPS. Um a couple of quick head um heads ups for folks. Um because of some of the closures that were proposed in the CIP. Namely Silver Spring International Middle School, what they are doing, what MCPS is going to do. Is alter the Woodward Boundary Study maps to account for the fact that they are proposing to close. Silver Spring International Middle. If you are looking at the Boundary Study, you will see Silver Spring International Middle is still shown in those maps. Um he did mention um that they are making some adjustments to account for some of the changes that were proposed in the CIP. Um. I think one of the things that was really helpful in that conversation was he stressed the fact that they understand that there's a lot of things that are happening at the same time. We have the Capital Improvement Plan that was suggesting school closures, but also building new schools. You have the Boundary Studies um that are underway that might um impact feeder schools and kind of where people where. Families are um attending school. And then there's also the magnet programs that are being reconfigured and refought. Um so just want you all to know that we are continuing to work with MCPS. Um to try to make sure that we're getting some clarity and sharing more information with the community. Um because we recognize and I think the superintendent does as well, that there's a lot of moving pieces, but the ultimate goal is to make MCPS better and stronger. And we are definitely looking to partner with MCPS to make sure um that our residents' needs are heard. And I believe that is all I have. And so with that, I will turn things over to the city manager for city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council and uh all our residents and guests uh joining us uh this evening. From the Police Department. I'd like to report that regarding Stop Sign uh Pilot Program. We're happy to report that we are beginning our Stop Sign Automation Pilot Program uh soon. In conjunction with the start of the pilot program, we will be conducting media outreach to alert residents of the beginning of the program. The installs or installations are slated to begin at the end of this week. Each installation will take one to two weeks uh to accomplish. The first intersections will be online in the first week of December, beginning the thirty day warning period. Citation issuance is projected to begin on January fifth. That's January fifth. These are the approved locations. Other locations may be added at a later date. Maple Avenue at Lincoln Southwest. Lincoln Avenue at Maple Avenue Northwest. Maple Avenue at Lincoln Avenue Northeast. Fenton Street and Tacoma Avenue Southeast. Flower Avenue at Jackson Avenue Northeast. Flower Avenue at Jackson Avenue Southeast. Glenside Drive at Jackson Avenue Southeast. Sligo Mill Road at Orchard Avenue Northeast. Tacoma Avenue at Fenton Street Southwest. Anne Street at Hammond Avenue Northeast. Anne Street at Hammond Avenue Southwest. Lincoln Avenue at Jackson Avenue Northwest. Erskine Street. At uh Thirteenth Place. Erskine Street westbound at Thirteenth Place. So one was eastbound, the other's westbound. Glenside Drive northwestbound at Anne Street. And Tacoma Avenue northeastbound at New York Avenue. Please reach out to the Police Department if you have any questions. From the Housing and Community Development Department, the city of Tacoma was awarded a FY twenty six grant. Through the Kim Lamfair Bike Swi- Bike Ways Network Program for the Purple Line Connector Project. The grant will fund the development of sixty-five percent of design plans to connect cyclists from the University Boulevard. Slash New Hampshire Avenue Purple Line Station to the New Avenue Bikeway Section A. The award amount is two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which covers eighty percent of the project cost. The city will provide the remaining twenty percent match. Once again, from the Police Department, on Friday, November twenty eighth from four thirty PM until seven PM. Make plans for Cookies with Santa. Enjoy cookies, get your photo taken with Santa, bring a new unopened toy and the photo is free. Or make a cash donation for your photo. This event takes place at the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department. At seventy-two oh one Carol Avenue and is sponsored by the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department and the Tacoma Park Police Department. If you will be going away for the Thanksgiving holiday for at least four days but less than thirty. And you don't have anyone staying in your home, including house and pet sitters. You may take advantage of our free vacation house check. Information and the application are on the city webpage. As we move into the holiday season, I want to share an update on our annual toy drive, Police Department Toy Drive. That began on November fourteenth and continues through December twenty second. Like many communities across the country, we're seeing the effects of a challenging economy. This year, we've had a significant increase in families signing up to receive toys, over two hundred children so far. At this time, donations are coming in more slowly than in past years, which is completely understandable given the financial pressures many households are feeling. We want to make sure every child who signed up has a joyful holiday, so we're continuing to encourage anyone who is able to donate at any level. To please consider doing so. Even small contributions make a meaningful difference. And as always, we're deeply grateful for the generosity this community continues to show year after year. This year, we're making it easier than ever to brighten a child's holiday. Our Amazon wishlist link will be included in tomorrow's posted comments. Just click, choose a gift, and it will be shipped directly to the Police Department. Our employees and volunteers along with members of the Fire Department will personally deliver the gifts to children in our community this holiday season. We also know this year has been especially challenging for many families as economic pressures continue to grow. The increased strain on household budgets often means fewer resources for children.
Alright, I don't know what happened. What? Are we recording now?
Yes.
Okay. Um and I just want to make sure that we have everyone back. Let's see. Uh. Hansak Bala. Westlick, myself, Senior Roger. Um Kurt's back. Uh it's. Who's the city manager back? Uh City Manager Disparito, are you on the line?
He doesn't appear to be online.
Additional names coming back in. Uh apologize to everyone, we're a little rusty. With our Zoom meeting.
Can we believe POC for this?
I wish. Okay, alright. Well, we will, let's continue to move forward. Um. I don't see City Manager Disparito.
Okay, and then join again.
He's back.
So sorry, continue to have uh some IT problems here.
Well, we were all knocked out, so that's perfectly fine. Um I think we were nearing the end of your comments when when everyone got kicked out.
Okay, I apologize. I have no idea what happened. Um yes, I. I'm not quite sure how far I got, but uh you've got a busy meeting tonight and I'm gonna let you go ahead and proceed with your meeting.
Excellent.
My apologies for the technical difficulties uh I continue to have with this monitor.
Oh, well, no, it's not you. I just want to uh want you to rest assured, everyone was kicked out, so. Um we were inadvertently, the meeting was dropped.
I hate to say it, but I feel, I hate to say it, but I feel better.
Yeah, no, no worries. Um so i- in light of the fact that I know um. One of our uh council members that's here in Salt Lake um needs to get to um Councilmember Dabala is on. Um the Board of Directors for the National League of Cities. Um and I wanted her to be able to get to an event that is here. Um we're going to quickly move up our voting session for this evening. And um what I would like for us to do. Um and I promise those that are waiting, I I will try to keep this as quick as possible. Um we're gonna move to our voting session. Um the first item is the Second Reading Ordinance awarding a contract for a rent stabilization study. Um would someone like to move it? Still moves. Thank you, Councilmember Dabala. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Um any points of discussion? Uh Councilmember Schlegel?
Uh, thank you, yes, uh, I would like to ask that we vote against this tonight. Uh, or effectively table it. Um, we can revisit. In that case, as as you said, Mayor Cersei, that would allow us to revisit all proposals and request more information of all offers. And I think that would be something wise to do. Um. I, I have a point of confusion, which is. How it was that the proposals were made available um at this juncture. Um, when, when a resident asked and when I asked. And I I hope that wasn't in violation of the ordinance, uh of code. Um, but uh, I I do think that when we discussed the scope. Earlier in the year, the idea was that the scope was gonna go out in the R F P and then what came back. Would be proposals and that there still would be power for the council to make decisions. Um, again, I said, I'm not a, I'm not a legal expert here. But if it is the case that we, in a first reading of an ordinance, cannot. Uh, have any discussion other than an up or down vote on the ordinance, then uh. Then I would respectfully ask that we allow ourselves an opportunity for more discussion of. Of the uh of the contract in question. Um, there are, there are many elements. Uh, where I think us having even more clarity around what we're looking for. Um, given what we've been offered and also. Having more clarity about just how much we're willing to pay, given what we budgeted was eighty-five thousand. Uh, I think these are all concerns and one other concern is that. The timeline um that we're looking at now in the R S G contract on the table. Takes us right up into October twenty twenty-six. And I'm, I'm very concerned uh that. We could get ourselves into a situation where. Uh, ordinance, policy changes could be up for discussion. In a period of time when there are active elections and residents, in some cases have received ballots. In some cases have mailed them in, in other cases haven't received ballots, haven't mailed them in. And uh, it it could just end up being something that was very difficult. For all of us as council members and for our community at that point, so. Um, even just on the basis of that timeline that is in the proposed contract. I would advise us to be cautious and not vote for this this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Um, Councilmember Dabala?
There we go. Push enough buttons, you get your mute off. Um, thank you, Mayor Cersei. Um, I said this last week, but it bears uh repeating, uh we. There's a difference between no discussion and just and some discussion. We have had discussion about the proposal, we have had discussion about the comparative with other, with other, um. With other uh proposals, um I feel like we have discussed it and it's a matter of folks deciding if they. As Councilmember Schlegel said, if they want to vote no or if they want to table it and if someone wants to table it, I think that's a separate. Um. Procedurally, that's a separate thing, right? So, um, I'll let you comment on that and I'll let you comment on um the release of the of the R F Ps to the council. For our background reading, thank you.
To just help people to understand contract. Okay, um. So, once there is a proposal that's submitted, there is typically an objective panel. That offers, in this case, we have a staff panel that establishes the criteria, they. Go through, they debate, they write up the notes, all of those things, right? They then come to us as legislators to say, hey, do you want to award this contract yea or nay? The scope of work or the fine tuning of what the contractor does. Happens after, right? After an award happens. So, what they have submitted to you is a proposal and you say, I like your proposal. You have, of all of the folks, you had the most prior experience, workers, all of the things that our staff has told us, right, in terms of their review. Once that award is made and folks start to do work, then they will come before council and they may say. This is the approach that we're looking to take. Here are some of the things that we're hoping to do. They're going to fine tune the timelines. They're gonna ask question, we're gonna provide feedback to them about. Things to consider for doing community engagement and the like, and then they fine tune. The approach that they're gonna take to the study based on the feedback that we provide. And then they come back to us at the milestones that are identified by staff who's managing the contract. To make sure that the deliverables come back to the city in the timelines in which were were outlined and in. In compliance with the terms and conditions of the contract. So, so that's how that process usually works and I don't know if. Director McNally is on the line and and can corroborate what I'm saying in terms of process. Um, because a proposal is just that, a proposal. It's, it's not what your final scope of work is, that final scope of work. And then even once you have a scope of work, it, the products and the approaches get fine tuned along the way based on feedback received. So I don't want there to be this perception that once it's awarded, it's never to be seen again by council. Until a product is before us, because that's typically not how these kinds of things work. Um, and so I'm not sure if Mister, I'm sure if.
I I'm on here, Madam Mayor, um, and yeah, I, and and what I wanna say is, um, yeah. Uh, I can talk a little bit about the process itself, um, so with the scope of work, they submit the proposal. Um. We, we brought forward the contract that we are recommending as staff as the review panel. Um, that was, you know, kind of looked at all of them. Um, I will apologize, you know, it was. We were asked to provide it and did not consult the code as thoroughly as maybe we should and. That, that is a hundred percent on myself, um, and so I apologize for that. Um, as it regards to kind of how it gets turned into a work product. The scope of work will be substantially basically very close to what gets put into the contract that they agree to. Um, as part of that contract, um, that does include going back to you guys several times. Over the next mon- uh few months, um, including one after they have the initial kickoff, they get all the data, coming back and talking about. Project approach. Um, so and when we talk about that, what we mean is. They're gonna have a lot of information about our current rent stabilization policies, what um some other uh best practices are. And then some data as well and then kind of framing that conversation up as kind of different um routes that we can take. As we develop recommendations and so that'll be the kind of first big chance for you guys to provide. High level direction on, hey, we want, you know, this sort of approach taken regarding rent stabilization within the realm of. Once again, making improvements, not about whether or not rent stabilization as a policy writ large. Is, is here, it's, it's about improvements and so kind of what tweaks uh makes sense. Um, and then there will be lots of other piece, points of engagement throughout uh the process itself.
And I'd like to add just a little bit, um, at least regarding the release of the proposals. Uh, it is atypical for us to share the proposals, um, I think staff were trying to be very transparent. Um, as we have been throughout this process. Even the process of discussing the scope of work with council was very um unusual and unique, but again, given. The level of interest and um concern that both the public and council had expressed regarding the topic. Um, we were operating from a perspective of transparency. After we have reviewed the code again, um, part of the challenge that I think creates some of the ambiguity. Is related to what qualifies as a public inspection, um, and we will consult for future. Purposes, we will consult with the city attorney to better understand who is public. Um, I think we had a, a uh uh narrower perspective on the definition. Um, when in reality, it's probably much broader to include council. Um, and thus the evaluation committee um should have been the only ones until the award was actually made to re- review the proposal. Um, that's something that we'll confirm with the city attorney, um, but I don't want Devon to uh uh. Feel as though he made that decision alone because he wasn't, he was advi- advised by the city manager's office, myself specifically. Um, again, related to that uh certain section of the code, um, so we'll, we'll confirm that uh for clarity in the future.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Landman, I see you have a question?
We'll make it easier to answer my question. So I, I did have one question and then one comment. My question has to do with. Whether there, uh, the code alludes to, uh, maybe it's differentiating between different. Contracts between contracts for services and then it lists a number of different types of, um, you know, illustrative types of services. And it seems to be, I thought distinguishing between like services and, you know, things or widgets, you know, uh. Uh, you know, rebar versus, um, you know, professional services and coun- and counseling and. I don't know whether that makes any difference as to whether uh you can disclose them ahead of time. And we frequently see lists of different contract offers for, you know, uh, building something and then the, the dollar amounts associated with them. And then we're told, well, we pick the lowest bidder or we pick, you know, and then, you know, it doesn't, we, we never really question when you tell us. When you picked a bid because it's the cheapest or, you know, something like that, it's, it doesn't really, um. Enter into our discussions with you when you present a bit of that kind, but is there a distinction between? Those types of uh, those types of contracts and this type of, and is this considered a services contract versus other? Um, does it fall into that category? That's my.
The professional services is a carve out within our procurement code. Um, you can decide if, if it qualifies as a professional service, you can decide to um. Procure, excuse me, procure a service via that exception. That is not the procurement procedure that this particular um study was following. So for reference, the procedural steps that we were following um is considered a competitive seal proposal. Not a professional services uh 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 acquisition.
Not have been procedure followed, you're saying?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
So that would have been, it would have been a different procedure followed had it, this been a professional services contract?
Professional, the carve out for professional services um allows us to uh to not seek rebids or have a competitive process if you so choose. But that is not the route that we took for this particular study. So professional services is things, as, as it says in the code, it gives, um, I, I believe it gives some examples. It talks about engineers, um, accountants would qualify, uh, legal counsel would qualify. Um, I don't know that professional services would include a study of this magnitude or on this specific subject matter. Um, but either way, that's not the procurement route that we chose for this, this study. And it is an option, but for us to decide to not procure via professional services, even if it's a professional services. Uh, i- if it qualifies as professional services.
Well, so my comment is that one of the, one of the things that was said by uh Mister McNally along the way of describing this to us during the city council meeting. Was that, was that the decision was made that cost was gonna be given a little significance in the rating here. And uh, that, you know, really caught my attention because then the decision was made to select as the contract, as the bid. The most expensive bid and uh of, of all the bids that were made and, um. And it was, it was not clear to me when saying that it was the least, the least important factor, uh, that, um. Uh, you know, to then select the most expensive bid, I mean, to me, I, 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 I wasn't sure of the meaning of that. Because then to select the most expensive bid, you know, the cost of the, of the overall proposal. Cost is expensive to me and to the taxpayer, so uh, you know, the meaning of that statement was clear. Um, when it was made, so, I mean, for me, that's a factor in the decision of how I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna leave my comment at that. Cause I wasn't exactly sure how to interpret the comment when you made it and I don't wanna read too much into it. Um, cause you were weighting the factors against one another, I guess, but um. That was not a decision that was necessarily obvious to me why that would have been made. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman, and I do just wanna stress that that was the evaluation criteria that was noted in the R F P that was shared with council, um. Uh, prior to its release. Councilmember Hansak?
Thank you, Mayor, um, I, I, uh, I, I may to repeat a few things that I said last week, I just wanna, but I think it's important to, to state. Um, I hear the concerns of some of my colleagues on this vote, we're gonna take the vote. Uh, but I just wanna say, this is such an important issue, rent, uh, getting rent stabilization right. For our community, everybody in our community values rent stabilization and all the complexity that it entails, it's very clear. From uh the budget surveys that this is a widely held value across all of our. Community to focus on quality of housing as well as our rent stabilization framework. So knowing that we all share that value. I guess I just wanna express to my colleagues, I feel it is a shame if we cannot get ourselves. More or less on the same page at this moment in time or soon thereafter, and I would like to, to. See us work towards um how we can do that, but I, I, I hesitate to, to put a pause on this, so. Um, what I'm hearing is some concerns about the price and the criteria and, and. Um, at least, at least a couple of my colleagues are wondering when in the process. They may have been able to or might be able to in the future feed into, um. Having a little bit more say perhaps over, uh. I don't think necessarily it would be which entity is chosen, but what the R F A itself says and, um. I, I, I guess I just wanna open that door to, I think Mayor, you explained quite clearly how we might do this after a contract would be awarded. Um, but I also think perhaps uh it beckons the question. It to, the, I, I think I hear my colleagues saying, when was the moment, um. That they may have been able to feel that they had a, a little bit more back and forth on maybe the scope of work. And, and I think what I see, and I just share this as, as a more recent incumbent, is that. There was a Housing and Economic Strategic Development Plan that was developed, there was a lot of data collected and all of this, as I see it from where I've been sitting. Has been done over quite a lengthy period of time and uh like several years. And feeding, uh, leading up to this process and the elaboration of the scope of work itself. Um, and, and I will be voting yes, because I think I'm quite comfortable with the nuanced criteria and scope of work that was laid out. Uh, and I'm, I'm sorry to hear that some of my colleagues are not so comfortable and I hope that we can find some ways. To get on the same page so that once those findings are fed back to us, we can also have a very. Reasonable conversation about what the findings are and what they mean for us going forward. Uh, I, anyway, I, I, I am sure that everybody would like to see that, I'm just, I really wanna compliment the staff for trying their hardest to be so transparent with us. Uh, even to the point of having shared the contract, there was a lot of emphasis on trying to align ourselves with the community's values. And, and getting us on the same page at this stage, so I, I'm sorry to hear that we're not a little bit closer aligned at this moment and I, I welcome opportunities to figure that out.
Thank you, uh, I really appreciate this discussion, I think this is very healthy to be having. Uh, the, um, to, to your comments first, uh, Councilmember Hansak, I really appreciate that and I too. Value very much are getting um a high, high quality, the best quality study we can. Um, as we're looking at this issue, which is more complex than any city council or, or really. Any one city staff with its plate full can sort out with all the many trade offs involved with rent stabilization as a policy. And housing supply being so connected to that. Um, in the, you referenced the Housing Economic Development Strategic Plan for twenty nineteen to twenty thirty. And I did wanna point out that, um, this particular study and its scope. Would, would not have followed necessarily in a linear fashion from what was stated in that plan, um, so. There, there, for example, there, the three pillars that we discussed a lot earlier. Um, so there, there, for example, there, the three pillars that we discussed a lot earlier this year. Um, were not in that plan, they were different. Uh, the objectives of our housing policy were stated differently. Now, it's fine, I understand that we are not locked into what a twenty nineteen council chose as its language. Um, but that being said, that doesn't mean that the twenty nineteen council's discussion stands in for ours now in a changing landscape. And I think we have a, a responsibility here in twenty twenty five to, to do our, our very, very best job. Um, in making sure we get a good study, um.
Um, I remember Schlegel, I'm, I'm really sorry, but we have a number of guests that are, for other items and I want to.
I will proceed, Mayor Cersei, each time that I've tried to discuss these things over the past many months. I've been interrupted and stopped and so I will, I would very much with your, I will speak quickly, but I would like to be heard by my colleagues with all due respect.
Please, uh, uh, just keeping in mind that we have a number of folks that have to present and Councilmember Dabala has an event. And we really need to get through our votes, we've gone over time for this item.
Okay. The community has the right to see the deliberations and the performance of its elected officials. Um, I, I, I know that we used a, a process with the Google Doc to propose scope changes. And to have staff combine those and then we did get to see those. So, but I do ask my colleagues whether that was sufficient opportunity for the public to see our deliberations. Or whether the time we have right now, which is so short, is sufficient opportunity. Um, one question I have for staff is, is the timeline as proposed by RSG, is that going to be part of the contract? Or is that up for negotiation still? A second question I have um, is regarding when the extension was made. Um, were uh, was, were conversations then had circling back to the first two respondents to let them know that an extension had been made? And in case there were new things discussed with the second two uh, companies proposing. Were those things then circled back and discussed with the first respondents that they could amend their proposals if wished? I know that's in the law. Uh, related to also the extension, was the sentence about cost not being necessarily a prohibitive factor? Was that in the initial RFP or was it added when the extension was made? Um, I have one other uh, area of questions, which is in terms of the evaluation process with the three panel members. Was that done entirely independently with each member siloed? Or did you discuss your scoring? I know the very close scores of the top two separated by two and a third percentage points. And then last, what was the weighting system used for those five factors? Thank you.
There were changes to the um, contract from uh, the extension to the original award. Uh, each panelist reviewed independently and discussed after it was already scored. Um, there were no follow up conversations with the original uh, entities that submitted their proposals. Um, again, because there were no changes and that includes the evaluation criteria. So for everyone, the um, the, the level of importance as listed in the RFP was consistent. For, for everyone in each phase of the RFP, I think that answers all your questions.
My, my question was that if um, in reaching out to, to additional potential respondents. And opening up discussion with them if they had questions, the law says that any questions asked at that point must also be shared back to the first respondents. The respond, the, the questions and the responses received so that everybody's on a level playing field.
Yeah, so if there were questions, and I don't believe there were any, um, we share them with the, the questions and the answers with everyone who's participated in the process.
And, and what I would say is, for the most part, what we did was we circle back and said to the original two that they, we were extending. And that was about the extent of the discussion with them. Because it was still an open RFP and so we wanted to make sure that everyone who could read the RFP, they could ask any questions at that point. But we didn't want to, we, we wanted people to still respond.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of the weighting system used, um, what, what was the weighting? You don't have to list it all, but what percentage weighting did Price receive ultimately in the scoring?
I believe Price and, and I can look it up for you, I don't have it, but it, it was the lowest weighted um, of, of the different options.
And that is not atypical for how the city structures its RFPs.
Thank you.
Um, and I do just want to remind everyone, um, there is a rent stabilization study webpage. Um, there was a work session on June the eleventh regarding the request for proposals. Um, staff also um, offered um, council members to have briefings. Um, on the approach that was taken to the scoring. And, and again, I just want to remind folks that this is the second reading. Um, we had extensive debate on the matter last week as well. Um, and so I do want to encourage us to move forward with the vote, Councilmember Dabala.
Uh, I was just gonna say, I would like to call the vote if there's nobody else waiting.
Great, alright, uh, so we are calling the vote on the, uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
May I make a motion to table this?
I think that takes precedence, Mayor.
Does that take precedence? Okay, would you, um, so you would need to, Councilmember Schlegel, um, officially make a motion, uh, Councilmember Schlegel makes a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Landman, second. Um, would the clerk please call the roll regarding uh, the motion to table the topic?
Councilmember Landman?
Nay.
Councilmember Dabala?
Nay.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hansak?
Nay.
Councilmember Wesselak? Mayor Cersei?
Nay. So the motion does not pass. Now, what is on the table is uh, the vote to um, move forward with the um, rent stabilization study. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Landman?
Nay.
Councilmember Dabala?
Yes.
Councilmembers Schlegel?
No.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson? I'm, I'm, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Gilbert?
Yeah, okay, no.
Okay, Councilmember, lost my place here, Councilmember Wesselak?
Aye.
Mayor Cersei? Mayor Cersei?
Sir, can you hear me?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Let me make sure my mic is not, computer's running a little hot because I can't vent it, hold on one second.
I heard, I heard from that four, three nos and four ayes.
Okay, so the, the, um, the contract is, um, moves forward. Alright, and so the next item. Is. Sorry, I'm trying to find my agenda. Um, the next item is the second reading ordinance approving the use of unassigned reserves to fund immigrant support services. Would someone like to move it?
So moved.
Do I have a, Councilmember Hansak, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, I think I heard Councilmember Dabala, um, any points of discussion? Make sure, I'm, I'm trying to flip through all of these things. Okay, Councilmember Dabala? Okay, alright, seeing done, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Landman?
Nay.
Councilmember Dabala?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Wesselak?
Aye.
Mayor Cersei?
So the next item is the uh, resolution adopting the city council twenty twenty six legislative priorities. Um, just as a quick uh, FYI, I did share um, that there was a friendly amendment by Councilmember Dabala. Um, and it is available in everyone's inbox and I'm not sure if the clerk has had a chance to post it. Um, but what I would like to suggest is we are, we move to vote on the amended version clarifying um, the Renew Act. Um, would someone like to move the resolution adopting the city council twenty twenty six legislative priorities?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Wesselak, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert, any points of discussion?
Do you want me to try to read the friendly amendment?
Um, no, I think, I think we're fine, we sent it all forward, everyone should have the language, it was, it was pretty minor.
Just clarifying that it, it was a study that passed last year, not the actual program. That was the nature of the amendment. Of the, of the revised words.
Not seeing any other hands, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Landman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dabala?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Uh.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Wesselak?
Aye.
Mayor Cersei?
Uh, just as a reminder for everyone in terms of next steps, we will still move forward with a presentation in script. Um, and that will be shared with members of council so everyone will know they're part of the presentation. Um, for our D twenty meeting on December the third. And so with that, I am going to, you know, just give me one minute. We're gonna finally get to the presentations. I want to thank um, all of the groups that have been waiting patiently as we've gotten through um, the, the um, the voting session. Um, first up is the Council Compensation Committee um, final report.
Good, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, good evening, uh, council and, um, my fellow residents. Um, we presented our, I'm here with the Compensation Committee and uh, my name is Franca Roffe and I'm from Ward Two. Uh, we presented our initial report on October uh, twenty second. And uh, during that meeting, we said that we would extend the resident survey and then present the ru- results in the next report. We also um, stated that we would uh, do a review of um, city responsibilities and a comparative review. Um, of city responsibilities and then make our final recommendations. So we're here uh, this evening just to provide the updates and for uh, residents who want to see the uh, first presentation. Uh, I think that's available on uh, line. Um, and with that, uh, I will hand it over to Nancy Cluj, but first Jesse, should I present my s- uh, the, should I share my screen? Or is that something you want to do?
Yeah, I think it's best if you share your screen if you don't mind.
Okay. Let me just find the presentation. One, one moment please, so. Okay, I'm trying to see how I can do. I can do um, presentation via, I guess, uh, hold on, I mean, I think I have to open it in PowerPoint, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Sorry. I lose brain cells as the evening goes on. Okay, uh, can everyone see that? Okay, so I'm going to hand it over to Nancy and she is going to present uh, the resident survey results, um.
Okay, for those of you that have the paper, that is slide thirteen, there we go. Alright, so we got back sixty nine uh, survey results. Uh, not a high percentage given the total population of Tacoma Park, but nonetheless, this is what we got. Uh, general overview is that, you know, a majority, thirty nine percent, did not see compensation as a major barrier to people serving on the city council. However, there were some concerns and residents were not um, unanimous that pay is the central issue that might keep somebody from serving on the city council. Residents were divided on whether the pay increase would expand the candidate pool. It's about fifty fifty, so fifty five percent agree it would expand the candidate pool, forty five percent disagree. Nearly half believe that higher pay would not improve candidate quality. A strong majority, sixty seven percent believes the current salary is appropriate. Most support including benefits with compensation, but thirty six point eight, about thirty seven percent oppose any benefits. Nearly half, forty four point nine percent are unsure about fairness, not knowing what nearby municipalities pay. Forty four percent do not support automatic adjustments, one third do support regular pay increases. And write in responses reflected concerns about accountability, spending and time commitment. So um, sort of a mixed uh, result there. If you can move on to slide sixteen, this was the additional data that you asked us to find. One of the big concerns was whether or was, whether or not other municipalities meet as frequently. Uh, for the most part, they do not. Rockville, College Park and Tacoma Park are the only ones that have weekly meetings, otherwise they meet twice a month. Um, I noted as well here that um, two of the comparison cities do have um, a full time mayor as opposed to a part time mayor. Uh, as we do in Tacoma Park. On the next slide, we tried to look at key responsibilities and this. Uh, the categories are sort of uh, a combination of me and AI putting things into categories. So um, I know Peter's already said to us, wait a minute, Tacoma Park does a lot of economic and community. And this was really based on sort of uh, what was online as key responsibilities. So I'd say there's a fair amount of overlap, um. All of them do str- legislative, fair amount of them have financial responsibilities. Fair amount of strategic planning, um, where it's sort of weak is the economic and community. So Gaithersburg, Laurel and Cumberland were very clear about their economic and community involvement. I suspect all of the cities do economic and community development, they just aren't as clear about it on their webpages. You'll see off to the side the kinds of things that would be included in each of those. And then finally, on the next slide, which is eighteen. Um. Particular concern that City of Tacoma Park has oversight of some departments that most other cities don't. And that was somewhat supported, so nobody has oversight over the fire, that's all county run. City of Tacoma Park is the only one of the comparison cities that does have their own police department. Everybody has Public Works and from what I could read of what Public Works does, it's pretty much the same. Almost everybody has oversight or has some kind of recreational program with Harvard Cross only having a committee, resident in an entire department. And again, reading what kind of recreational activities are provided, pretty similar. And then City of Tacoma Park is pretty much the only city that has its own library. College Park does run a little volunteer library and the city residents can have access to McKeldon Library on the University of Maryland. So somewhat unique in terms of police and library oversight that the other cities don't have. And with that, I'll turn it back to Franca.
Thank, thank you so much, um, I'm going to uh, turn it over uh, to Peter. Um, on the salary and benefits, we did not make any changes and we're not recommending any changes to the current level of benefits or salary. level of benefits or salary, uh, but, uh, continue the annual adjustments tied to the employment, uh, cost index. And then I'm going to hand it over to Peter to go over, uh, uh, any, uh, changes to the other recommendations. So, so over to you, Peter.
Franca, good evening to the members of the council. Um, in the first, uh, section here, inclusive communication and outreach, and this is, um, a set of ideas that would apply citywide and the notion is just to work to bring more people into the discussion of municipal governing and the two bullet points there, we were talking about those already. The one we did drop here was, um, we had previously, previously included, um, a reference to the idea of all council communications being archived and searchable. And after discussing it, I think we reached the conclusion that since the agenda material and all of that is very well archived and since there is a system that works reasonably well under the state for doing, uh, freedom of information type searches, that we didn't need to have, um, call for that type of, um, archiving of all, uh, council, uh, communications. So we dropped that. And I would know, and this is more just for me personally, because it wasn't something we discussed in detail, um, on the committee, but I know the council is discussing separately the idea of the community connectors and that certainly would be something of a sort of dovetail with what we're talking about here in terms of more inclusive communication outreach to the community generally. Then if we go to the next page, um, engagement and candidate support. The first one there, and this, uh, spins off of the comments that, uh, Councilmember, uh, Schlegel made, um, in, in our last discussion when we presented, and we all thought it was a good idea, the idea of developing a brochure on how to run for office along with what the key responsibilities are and the idea of, uh, leaving that lying around everywhere so that people might see it when they weren't expecting it, not exclusively, although it was a good suggestion, not exclusively on the podium and, and around the council chambers, but in other places as well, because a lot of people may, may not even be aware that they have that option and that would be a relatively, um, low-cost way of adding to the, um, um, the other ways that we talked about, uh, promoting, um, more awareness of, uh, the political system he- here in the city. So within that, uh, engagement and candidate support, uh, the other, um, four bullet points there, ones that we already talked about. And again, so the first group on the previous page, that was for the community generally. This one is now for people who are running or thinking about acti- actually thinking about running. That's engagement and candidate support. And then the last one below is when people are actually elected, what we could do. And so I'll just add that, um, on this question of should there be sessions available for those who might be considering running? Um, as a, I think I said it last time, but I'll reiterate, as a former council member, I'd certainly be willing to be part of a, of a session like that, assuming that it wouldn't be, uh, or might not be appropriate to have sitting, uh, council members do that. Then on the last one, um, council members important and technical assistance. The idea here is that these are the things we would offer so that when people are thinking about running and they knew that they could get these various benefits after they were elected, that might make the prospect of running for council a, a little bit more, uh, attractive to them. And a big one that we talked about is, um, the, the idea of, um, providing technological or financial support to enable council members to establish and maintain their own electronic newsletters. That's the third bullet. And as we talked about the last time we were here, there are really several different ways of doing it. We didn't in the end settle on one method. One option would be for the council or for the, for the city government to establish a standard template that all council members could use. Another one would be to say, you can pick what you want and we'll give you some modest stipend to help cover it. And then the third one, which came up, was the idea of, could there be a standard group of emails that could be passed along within each ward? And it's a, it's an interesting and attractive idea, but we felt that that doesn't really exist. There is not an assemblage of, um, emails like that. So I think we probably mildly prefer the standard template for everybody. But I, I leave it up to the council's, uh, discretion if they decide to go forward this, whether to do it that way or to let each council member decide for themselves and have the city help, uh, defray the, the cross for it. We, um, dropped the idea, uh, the childcare, um, providing childcare for, um, council members on the evenings of council meetings. That didn't seem to get a lot of attention. And then, or a lot of support among the group when we presented it. And to go beyond that and to provide some sort of broader childcare allowance for, for everybody who was running seemed to be a little bit beyond the scope and, and beyond the mission and really didn't have a lot of support within our committee for something along those lines. So we did, we did drop that. And I'll just say, we also discussed on this question of part-time versus po- full-time. What should the job be? Is it full-time? Is it part-time? One of the topics that came up, and this references what Nancy presented earlier, a few minutes ago, um, the idea of meeting, once a week or, um, once every couple of weeks. And I don't think on the committee we reached a clear, uh, resolution on that, but I'll just say for myself personally, one option would be, and I think this was done at one point in past history within the city, maybe to have every other council meeting or one a month, not have any votes and just have them be work sessions. That would take a little bit of the edge off preparation, once or twice a month for the, for a council member. And I'm not going to say that, um, when there's presentations without a vote, that it's no work at all. So it obviously is a lot of work, but it's ramped up a- as we saw in the, um, previous discussion before we got on. When there's a vote, sometimes they're very quick, sometimes they're, they're quite detailed. So maybe the council could at least consider the idea of whether, if not every other, at least once a month, the council meetings should not include votes. Obviously, council members know, sometimes there's emergencies, so provision would have to be made for that. But that's just a, a thing. We didn't settle on that as a recommendation, but, uh, it's something I'll just toss out there because it came up as a, as a concept. And, uh, we'll, we'll leave it there unless there, uh, other questions.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks, uh, Nancy, and thank you to the committee. That's all we have for you.
Well, thank you all so much, um, for doing all of this work. I know that it's not an easy task. Um, so I'm checking to see if my colleagues have any questions. Councilmember Mahanza.
Sorry, just trying to unmute myself. Thank you. Thanks, thank you so much to the committee for all the time and energy that went in from each and every one of you and coming back to council twice. Um, I, I actually have a number of questions and I wasn't sure because, because it's a committee versus, uh, you know, staff, it wasn't easy to do some of this beforehand. Is there another way than me asking the questions here, uh, Mayor?
Yeah, so just so that everyone understands next steps, um, the committee is providing us with recommendations. Um, staff will take a look at the recommendations. We will have a work session in the new year to see whether or not there are any of the recommendations that, um, staff would recommend, um, my, and how, um, some of these items could be potentially addressed. And then the council would need to make a decision around what, uh, modifications we would agree, um, that we would want to make as a result of the recommendations received. So, um, this is an opportunity for us to ask questions of the Compensation Committee in terms of the approach, things that they considered, challenges that they might have de- identified, um, but in terms of ultimate adoption of any recommendations, that is something that would happen in the next year, um, and while we are working with staff and then as we have council discussions.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, I do, well, let me, if, if you don't mind, I'll just lay out some of the questions. I've, I've sort of numbered them and, and I'll try to outline them as succinctly as I can. So, um, I, I, I was really struck actually by a couple of things, points that you emphasized tonight. Uh, and I wanna, I wanna lift those up a little bit because I don't think they got as much attention last week. I thought we spent, or I, my mind focused a lot on the number of hours that council members are spending, um, and I appreciate you having gathered that data. Uh, it's also very notable that the Rockville and College Park, uh, and Tacoma Park are the only ones that meet weekly. Um, but I'm not seeing a lot of, um, very significant suggestions about changing that cadence or the workload therein. Um, and that we have a library and police. So, um, and we have this unusual outlier that was emphasized last week, not this week, about the, um, very, very high number of voters and voter participation and expectation. Um, and so, uh, I think a lot of my questions for you are, are around the question of equity. And I guess I have to admit to you that I'm a little puzzled by, uh, some of the statements in your slides and that's what I'd like to ask you about. Um, so you had said that, um, uh, residents, uh, sorry, uh, um, you said a majority of residents that answered this survey did not see compensation as a major barrier. But, um, it's thirty-nine percent. So can you explain, um, about the other sixty-one percent? Because usually thirty-nine percent doesn't comprise a majority.
Unfortunately, I can't explain that for you. This was prepared by Kim and she couldn't be here this evening. So I was just reading her results, um.
Okay, okay. Well, may, is that some, is that something I can ask for, Mayor? A response?
You can, um, you can make sure, Councilmember Hansak, um, can just jot down your notes. Um, that would be the follow-up items for the committee. Um, we can make sure that we share, share that with the committee.
Um, I would be delighted if your report could also show us, in case you don't have the data too. This is my second question, about, um, how many of those sixty-nine respondents were from which wards? Um, I may have missed it, but I think at our last work session, we had asked if we could help push out the survey among our wards. I don't recall having received that and I apologize if I, I very well may have just missed it.
So, uh, we did not ask for Ward on the survey, which is something we discussed that would be good to incorporate in the next, uh, next time this is done, uh, asking for more demographic information. Uh, and, uh, the survey was available on the website. Um, and that would be how you would get out to your constituents, um, uh, encouraging them to go on the Tacoma Park website, uh, to participate. And Jesse has her hand up.
Yeah. Um, so I, I would just say I did, I did, when we re- re-, um, re-upped the survey, did send it to all the, the link to all the city council members.
I apologize, Jesse, and that's my, 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 I, I overlooked it then.
You all received way too many emails.
No, I just, I, I had hoped I, yeah, I, well, then my bad. Um, so, uh, but I, but it, yeah, I, it's too bad that we don't have Ward data in the, um, in the database, but we don't. So, um, and, uh, um, in terms of equity, uh, and looking at demographic representation of our, uh, future councils, our past councils, I, I just want to share with the committee that I continue to be very concerned that we aren't making, we, we made, at some point, we made, um, a significant amount of meaningful progress and sort of stepwise. Uh, a- at least that's my observation from the, the data that we've been presented with. Um, however, I, I see a sort of stagnation at that point. And I am extremely concerned about, um, the fact that this puts us in a track, um, on these recommendations to stay sort of status quo for the next four years in terms of making more progress on making our council more demographically representative of our, um, of our city's residents. And I, I, I pull out in particular, you could look at any number of factors, but in particular, um, the fact that we've only had one renter on our council, I think, from the data. But that one slide that captures some of that demographic data, I guess, I, I just, it's, it's hard for me to understand how the data has been interpreted that you have presented to us on equity and distribution, um, including the one, the, the question that I first asked about the, the majority, thirty-nine percent not seeing compensation as a major barrier. And then another one of your data points says that fifty-five percent agree, um, that pay increases would expand the candidate pool and forty-five percent disagree. And that is one of those data points that can be, uh, presented in different ways, uh, particularly in light of the sixty-nine responses you had. I think, I, I hear there, yes, we're divided, but yes, fifty-five percent of them also said that increases might expand the candidate pool. And, and it is my, um, it is my hypothesis that that is probably true in order to advance equity because of the number of hours that people are working in this job. Uh, and I just wanted to share that with the committee in so much as it, um, may influence your final recommendations. Um, and then, um, um, and then lastly, I wanted to invite the committee to comment a little bit on whether or not in your survey you defined what, um, you mean by quality of council. And again, I, 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 I'm expressing my concern about what we mean by quality. Um, I, I, I know you can't change your survey and I don't know whether you tried to define that, um, or if you left it up to the respondents. But, um, I am concerned, uh, that what I see here is a suggestion that, um, because we've only had, uh, because we've only had, uh, one renter, for example, and fifty-one percent of our residents are renters, that somehow, um, and that people are financially not going to be able to be compensated at even minimum wage to do this job in the future, that, um, quality implies someone who is retired, um, and can live, uh, uh, off of some other income, either retirement or a spouse or something like that. I, I just wanted to show that if, if anyone wants to respond, feel free. And, and I, I, I hope this is not seen as, um, extremely critical of what you're doing. I'm just, I, I'm, I'm struggling with interpreting the results that you've presented. Thank you.
Thank you and noted. And no, we did not define quality. We did, uh, leave it up to residents. I mean, there are a lot of improvements we can make on, uh, the survey. Um, and, uh, yeah, any feedback, um, would be, um, would be valuable, uh, from residents and from yourselves. Thank you.
Councilmember Landman.
I'll stop it briefly on the, on the question that Councilmember raised as well. So I, I think, uh, number one, as I think was mentioned, it's a fairly small sample. Obviously, when, uh, the key way to do it is to sign on to the website, you know, sixty-nine people out of a, um, the population of eighteen thousand or whatever the right number is, isn't going to give you a, a real representative sample. But I do think, and if you take the trouble to look through the, um, the, the responses, there's a lot of conflicting responses, even within the, the respondents themselves, thinking maybe that it could help to get more diversity, but maybe not wanting to do it. And, and so that's, you know, voters and residents sometimes have, have conflicting views as, as maybe, uh, elected officials, um, do as well. I think that, um, there are a lot of other things be s- and this is just myself talking now. This is not something that's the official, in the official findings of the, of the committee. But I think there are a lot of other steps that can be taken, um, that can help also to promote, uh, more participation by a broader range of residents. I think a few years ago, when, for example, we changed the, the voting time from the odd years to the evening years and, and we have seen greater participation than perhaps also because of, uh, vote by mail. And some of the other steps we've taken in terms of, or that the city has taken in terms of racial equity and so on. And I do think with these community connectors, all of that and other steps as well that the council is taking reviews can help promote that. I think the, the biggest one, that's the biggest struggle, is that, um, economic diversity more, I think, than gender or, or race or nationality diversity is, is a tough one. And I think that's true not just in our little community, but everywhere. In many cases, people are renters, fair or not, um, often feel less, less connected, but I hope that some of those steps, like the community connectors, could help that. And the other recommendations we've made here are at least our effort to find steps that can be taken outside of the realm of, um, monetary compensation that can help make the position, uh, more attractive or I could even say potentially easier. I know it's not easy, but easier, uh, for, for those who may be struggling from a financial point of view. And I'm not sure that is directly responsive to what you raised or not, Councilmember Hansak, but I toss it out there anyway.
I want, oh, sorry, I, I, go ahead. Sorry.
Sorry, I just, um, I'm gonna try to move this conversation along. We have like three other presentations and a work session. Um, Councilmember Landman.
Can I just, uh, make one correction? There is a typo. Uh, it is, I'm looking at the raw data and fifty percent of the residents, uh, you know, that participated, a small sample again, said that they did not believe that, uh, compensation was a barrier. So that's a typo. Apologies for that.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, Councilmember Hansak, is that, is that an old hand? Okay, get rid of that hand. Councilmember Schlegel.
Sorry, I dragged a task.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Landman. I'm sorry. Once you took your hand down, you fell out of queue for me. Go right ahead.
So I wanted to say, I, I appreciate this, uh, what you've done here. I think your recommendations are very pragmatic. And, and that is helpful, uh, and I think that probably reflects having an actual former council member be a member of the committee. Uh, anyway, I, I wanted to ask whether when you were uh, uh, compa- putting these recommendations together. Did you actually speak with any of the other or investigate with the other um municipalities that you were looking at? What kinds of technology or um, uh, approaches they were using to communicating with their. Um, constituencies or what kind of communications, uh, like newsletters or outreach they were doing. Uh, to see whether, to get some, to, to, to work on the recommendations that you came up with. Like, do they have uh other methodologies that they use in their communities? Do they have newsletters like the Tacoma? News, Tacoma Park newsletter or, or something else that they do or, and. And did you by any chance look at whether they were totally electronic versus having paper newsletters and for purposes of seeing whether. These recommendations align with what other people are doing. Is that something you looked into?
Uh, I can, um, Peter, do you wanna respond to that? But uh, no, you know, the, the time we had was very limited.
Yeah, I, I think we had a, a limited time and um, limited. Um, resources and so we were trying to gather information that was. Um, easily and more generally obtainable as opposed to doing the kind of individualized, individualized outreach that's being suggested. I think it. It makes a heck of a lot of sense, so I don't, I don't disparage the suggestion, but. I think we felt that level was a little bit outside what we had time and, and resources to do.
Okay, I was hopeful that you might have had it in hand because it's something we've been wondering about when we were thinking about whether we should continue to have. A paper newsletter, but it was just a hope. We've been thinking we, we'd love to know. Uh, so if you had it, great. If you didn't, it's, we'll go out and get it because it's something we need to know anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Landman. Council member Schlegel?
Uh, thank you. Um, I'll, I'll try to be as brief as possible. Huge thanks to you. Um, very sophisticated thinking here where you thought about compensation, not just in terms of money and benefits, but also. Time that needs to be allocated in people's lives for this work. Um, one thing I just wanted to say for my colleagues to hear is that. I, I do agree with the thought the committee expressed that using the website as a platform for council member communication. Um, would probably be better. I think it's more equitable because so few people are actually on listservs potentially. Um, so that the listeners may privilege people of a certain age or way of life or something that they, they do a lot of email. Maybe there'd be a way to tie into text alerts as well if we were using the website platform. Um, second comment was just uh, the very happy about. The elaborated thinking on the idea of some sort of brochure on how to run for council and just to thank you, um. Peter, for your offer of training for potential candidates. Um, so my two questions, one were, I'll just ask them both. Um, did, did the committee ever think about? The timing of our nominating caucus while it was thinking about trying to make running for council a. A spicier proposition for people, um, whether moving the nominating caucus earlier in the year. Would allow people to, to be nominated maybe by others and get a running start in time, getting formed to get a running start. And the second was, uh, Peter, maybe you could speak to this as former council member. There is a, a continuous flow of kind of routine requests and. How do you get this done and when are they gonna come back and repave and there are wires down? Um, do, have you ever had any thoughts on how that flow, which is so. That flow of referrals to staff from council members, which can be so debilitating for staff. Um, and eat up a lot of council member time, whether there are any um fixes you ever thought of. That would reduce those numbers of requests from residents, just kind of like, I don't know how to do something request.
Well, um, uh, again, I'm speaking for myself here because we didn't discuss those things. In the um committee and of, of, uh, Drunka and Nancy, don't mind, I'll, I'll. I'll respond, but again, this is, I suppose more my personal views. We didn't talk about the um, any changes to the format or the timing of the um nominated caucus. And I guess one thing I would say on that is that I think everybody kinda, most people kinda like the. Uh, say in comparison to most other elections we have in this country, relatively short circumscribed period that we have for it. And within that, as the official time, there's nothing that prevents anybody from. Running before that. I think you have to declare under the new, relatively new system, you have a month or two before that. And you can honestly start running whenever, when I ran, I didn't, I, I started knocking on doors, you know, some. Few weeks or maybe a bit more prior to that official um kickoff, so I don't see that one as really being. A, a major thing and I look, and to me, personally, I like the, the relative shortness of that. On the other question. You know, the better the website is, the more residents can use that to look up things as opposed to. Contacting council members who then contact staff who, who then uh sometimes drop everything to, 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 to be responsive. Um, I think sometimes council members can get answers. More quickly for residents than they can by contacting staff and once they see that, that's what they do. I think these days, people are pretty accustomed to going to websites for quick information of a general sort. And so somewhere within those three options, getting it from the website, asking you guys to help or going directly to the staff. I think the answer lies, but um, I probably spent half of my time, I don't know much time I was spending, on. Working one way or the other within those three options to help individuals. Um, with small problems of that sort as opposed to the big exciting, what people think of as fun legislative things. A lot of the job is helping people with uh more narrow, um. Assistances of that type, so I'm not sure I've answered the question or not, but I, I think that's a challenge, it's a big challenge.
Thank you very much. Um, council member Westler?
Thank you. Um, thank you all so much, uh, and, and especially for the added information after our. Uh, last conversation about comparing meeting time and um departments that, that we are a part of. Um, I have a question because, um, Peter, when you were, I. I totally understand why the childcare option was taken out and I'm very aware, that's a very complicated thing. I wanted to just ask though, because Peter, I thought, I think you said that in the discussions you all had. It felt too much to offer to everybody and it made me realize, are we talking about when candidates are running? Or after people are on the council because. That is a big difference in the number of.
No, I mean, the, the concept was only ever in the earlier version that we presented, um. Whenever it was a month ago, that there would be a, a, a benefit on the evening of council meetings for council members, but obviously. Um, it would be great to be able to offer childcare kind of across the board for. All workers is everywhere and I think that from the committee's point of view, it just became a, it became a bigger. Thing that was beyond what we felt we could do because the. The costs would really be quite significant and there would have to be a management of that and. And say that, um, I can think back to, for example, when we had some of these meetings that went till. Uh, two in the morning sometimes when I was on the council and on the one evening when we offered childcare on site, a whole group of people. Came to testify and speak who had never been there before and didn't come back again because. Uh, guess what people with young kids are doing at seven thirty, so I, I don't mean to, I don't, any of us on the committee need to say that. It wouldn't be an important thing to be able to somehow provide, but I just think we felt like cost-wise.
Right.
It was hard to, it was hard to justify.
Yeah, no, and that makes sense. I think, I, I guess I was trying to understand because to think of. How to support possible childcare benefits for a seven-member council where. X number even have kids uh versus. Everyone who runs, um, and whatever that might look like versus, you know, our weekly meetings, you know, so I can understand why this. It, it doesn't seem very overwhelming, um, because those are all just such magnitudes bigger, but um. Again, not an easy issue, so I, 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 I appreciate that you all um took some time to think about it. Thank you.
Uh, so I just wanna thank the committee. I know that it is a hard job to. Talk to current council members, in essence, about our worth, um. And I recognize how challenging that can be, um, but I appreciate the recommendations that you all provided. Um, I know that the last council compensation committee really did give us a huge bump up. I know that, um, for some, some newer council members, you may not realize the substantial bump up. Um, but, um, prior councils, um, did receive, um. The prior council com- compensation committee did, in essence, really increase not only the amount of pay, but also. Um, the suite of benefits that would be available to council members as well. Um, so I do appreciate and recognize the challenge that this committee has, um. In terms of trying to think through other options, um, for compensation or support. Um, in light of the, the latest update, um, to pay that this council did receive. Um, so thank you all so much and I understand how hard that, how hard that was and you all did a fantastic job of. Trying to take an evidence-based approach to your recommendations. Um, so again, as I mentioned, in terms of next steps, um, the count staff will be looking over the recommendations. Um, I know council member Hanzak, you had a couple of additional questions for member, about the data. Um, I, well, ask our committee, hey, would, would you all be okay if council member Hanzak were to send those questions regarding the data? Um, so that she can get those answers. Um, and then we will reconvene on this topic. Um, after recess, um, and after staff has had an opportunity to take a look at the recommendations. Um, and then we'll have a work session doing a deeper dive and ultimately, if there aren't any modifications to the code or compensation. Um, the council will need to put forward, um, either a resolution or ordinance allowing for that to happen. Okay, alright, wonderful. Well, thank you all so much. We really appreciate it. Alright, um, so the next item is the New Ave Bike Ways update.
Good evening, Mayor Sosie and council members. I'm Roz Grigsby. I'm the planning manager for this city. Tonight's presentation is on the design of the New Ave Bike Ways project, section A and section B. The city identified the vision of making New Hampshire Avenue a multi-way boulevard. In the New Hampshire Avenue corridor concept plan that the council adopted in two thousand eight. And the bike way has taken shape and kind of taken its current form coming out of the New Ave feasibility study done in twenty thirteen. As part of Tacoma Park's long-term commitment to multimodal transportation and to the reduction of climate impact of fossil fuels. The New Ave Bike Way fills the gap of safe bike infrastructure along Maryland six fifty, New Hampshire Avenue. The route creates a two-directional bike way to make new connections between local, commercial, recreational and transit hubs. While also pres- preserving essential vehicular access to neighboring properties. The work's been primarily grant-funded with a required city match. The bike ways divided into four sections, which has enabled the city to pursue um external funding to move forward. Tonight, we're talking about section A, which extends from Holton Lane to Auburn Avenue. And section B, which extends from Auburn Avenue to Poplar Avenue. The project as a whole also includes section D, which will get from Poplar to the DC. Board boundary line at Kansas and the New Ave Purple Line connection. Um, and as the city manager Dispirito mentioned tonight, we have received a grant from the Maryland. Um, Kim Lampier Bike Ways Grant Fund to move forward on, um, developing the design for that. The city contracted with RKNK for the design work and coordinated with agency stakeholders, including Maryland State Highway. Um, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning and various utility companies. Both section A and section B designs were also reviewed by the Montgomery Planning Board through the mandatory referral process. So tonight we'll hear from Rob Gillespie and his team at RKNK. To present the designs of section A and section B as we near completion of the Maryland Kim Lampier Bike Way Grants that have. Um, enabled us to develop these designs. If you'll advance to the next slide, I just wanted to give a, um. Brief reminder, there we go, a brief reminder of how this work, um, done by the. Planning Division fits into our broader work on pedestrian and bike initiatives, so you can see we have. Ongoing work and then we have specific projects, um. Many of them grant-funded and so tonight we're looking at two, the. Section A and section B, which have been funded by separate grants and in separate cycles over the years. The council materials for tonight's presentation include, um, a chart of the various grant. Grants that we've received to move this project forward. So with that, I will, um. Turn it over to Rob Gillespie and his team.
Great, thanks Roz and good evening everyone. Uh, so as Roz mentioned, uh, we completed final design. For the New Ave Bike Way Sections A and B, uh, improvement projects. Um, and I wanna just recap some of the background information again to re- you know, refresh everyone for, you know, on both projects, um. And then we get into the details of the proposed improvements. So the, so again, the purpose of the New Ave Bike Way. Uh, is to improve bicycle and pedestrian safety and connectivity to local businesses, recreational facilities and transit. Um, this will be accomplished by repurpose, repurposing those uh underutilized service lanes along southbound New Hampshire Avenue. As a two-directional bike way. Um, so, so the city's uh proposed new app bike way extends along an approximate two and one-quarter mile corridor. Uh, from the DC line, uh, north to the Tacoma Langley Transit Center. And, and as Roz mentioned, the project's divided into four sections, uh, for design and implementation. Uh, referring to the graphic on the right, starting from the south, um, near DC line, the DC line at Kansas Lane. Um, the district connector, also known as section D, uh, extends north through local neighborhood streets, uh, to the intersection of New Hampshire. At Poplar Avenue. Uh, Sections A and B, again, which we will cover in more detail this evening. Uh, extend along southbound New Hampshire Avenue, uh, from Poplar Avenue, north. Uh, to Hol- uh, excuse me, to Holton Lane, that's Sections B and A up to Holton Lane. Uh, and the Purple Line Connector extends from Holton Lane. Uh, north again through uh neighborhood streets to the intersection of University Boulevard and Anne Street. And the concept study was completed in June and, and as was announced this evening. Um, the city was awarded additional funding for semifinal design, which is fantastic. Um, so. And a little bit more background, um, the project was coordinated with the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Sector Plan and the County Bicycle Master Plan. Um, the design follows the County Bicycle Master Plan recommendations as closely as possible. However, right away, utilities and environmental features presented some constraints and we had to make some concessions, um, for the bike way design. And the differences in the bike facility types between the Bicycle Master Plan. And the final design for Sections A and B are provided here for reference. Um, so we also coordinated with Montgomery County DOT and confirmed that none of the current study alternatives for the New Hampshire Avenue flash. Bus rapid transit or BRT will impact the New Ave Bike Way improvements. Um, so project timeline recap for section A, thirty percent design was completed under a Metropolitan Washington. Council of Governments grant, uh, sixty percent design, mandatory referral review and final plan specs and estimate. Or PS and E design was completed under a Maryland Bike Ways grant. Uh, for section B, uh, thirty percent mandatory referral review, sixty percent design. And ninety percent design and two final PS and E submissions were completed, uh, under a separate Maryland Bike Ways grant. So with the conclusion of tonight's presentation, city's next steps are to secure funding for permits, utility relocations and construction. And, um, last but not least, to the background planning and community engagement for both projects included a public meeting to review thirty percent design. Mandatory referral review and public hearing, a presentation of sixty percent design to city council. Regular community outreach, uh, through bike wi- regular community outreach, uh, through bike wi- uh, bikes, safety roundtables, newsletters, and, uh, website updates, and, um, this presentation of the final design for both sections to city council this evening. So for frame of reference, I'm gonna present the section B improvements first, proceeding north, followed by the section A improvements. Um, just to start, for section B, uh, key facility bikeway types included a shared use path and a southbound shared lane with contra-flow bike lane within the frontage roads. Um, other key features of the design include ADA-compliant upgrades at intersections and bus stops, traffic signal modifications, uh, including audible pedestrian and countdown pedestrian signal upgrades at three intersections. Again, it's just for section B, and a removal of the traffic signal pole at the shopping center shown in the image to the right. Uh, and that'll be relocated to the New Hampshire Avenue median to provide more space for the bikeway. The project will also provide improved lighting at the intersections, including supplemental LED lighting. Now, I'd like to take us, uh, segment by segment through the section B corridor. So our, our design approach, uh, again, for section B used available low-volume, low-speed frontage roads as buffer separation for the bikeway from the southbound New Hampshire Avenue travel lanes. Uh, where there's no adjacent frontage roads, a grass or paved buffer was provided between the bikeway and southbound New Hampshire Avenue. Uh, the first section shown here between Poplar Avenue, uh, and Conway Avenue will maintain existing travel lanes, um, along si- uh, Maryland six fifty and widen towards the west to replace the five-foot sidewalk with an eight-foot wide, uh, shared-use path shown here, um, and a two-foot minimum paved buffer. Proceeding north, uh, continuing north between Conway and Prince George's Avenue, and you see the image here, this is, um, looking north again towards Prince George's Avenue. Uh, there's a one-way frontage road there, and, and that'll be reduced to implement an eight-foot wide shared-use path shown in the image here. Continuing on to the next segment, um, between Prince George's Avenue and Belford Place, the existing sidewalk adjacent to the city dog park, um, will be replaced with an eleven-foot wide shared-use path. And the segment of the frontage road in the image to the right here will, uh, be removed, and the eleven-foot shared-use path with a buffer separation will continue to the intersection of Belford Place. And Belford Place is up here in the image. Moving up, um, from Belford Place to the northern limit of, of section B at Auburn Avenue, uh, we had to implement an approximate one-and-a-half-foot shift of the southbound travel lanes along New Hampshire Avenue to the east. Um, so shown here, uh, between Belford Place and the shopping center, the frontage road will accommodate a southbound shared lane and northbound contra-flow bike lane. Um, so you get your southbound shared lane and your northbound contra-flow bike lane here in the proposed condition. Um, and the existing sidewalk and street parking, uh, to residential homes will be maintained. So the frontage road adjacent to the shopping center, uh, will remove the curbside parking, implement the one-and-a-half-foot east shift of the southbound travel lanes, as I mentioned, and, and reconstruct the retaining wall, uh, this retaining wall here. And that will, uh, allow a continuation of the southbound lane and the northbound contra-flow bike lane, uh, as shown here. And the existing, uh, sidewalk between the shopping center and Ethan Allen Avenue, and here's the shopping center and northern, um, driveway, northernmost driveway of that shopping center, and looking again north towards Ethan Allen Avenue and Maryland, uh, East West Highway. Um, it'll be widened to an eight-foot shared-use path with a two-foot paved buffer from existing conditions. Um, this retrofit's possible, again, due to that shift of the southbound travel lanes and a reduction also of the, um, the median width from four feet to two feet. So overall, the, the section B project, um, sorry, um, let's see, did I skip, I skipped my last section. Sorry, this is the last section, from Ethan Allen to Auburn Avenue. That's the northernmost segment. Um, that'll continue that eight-foot wide shared-use path with a two-foot paved buffer, um, again, to Auburn Avenue, and that's what we're showing here in this proposed image. We're gonna be doing, providing a, a, uh, eight-foot wide shared-use path with two-foot paved buffer to your northern limit of section B, which is at Auburn Avenue. Alright, and so overall, um, just as far as stormwater management, the project for section B will result in a net reduction in purbius area. Um, to sat- uh, to satisfy stormwater management requirements, we're proposing a precast biofiltration unit on the north side of Prince George's Avenue at the New Hampshire Avenue intersection. So it'd be right adjacent to this inlet structure shown. Um, we won't be impacting the utility pole, and we'll be able to provide, um, that stormwater management facility there. Um, so as far as impacts on section B, uh, we will require some right-of-entry agreements or easement for the bikeway improvements uh, and the traffic signal modifications at the shopping center, south of Ethan Allen Avenue. Um, utility relocations are required as well, including six utility poles, three fire hydrants, and an electric meter, and approximately fifteen parking spaces along the frontage roads will be removed. So design, uh, moving to section A now, um, again, which starts at Auburn and runs north to Holton Lane along the southbound lanes of, of Maryland six fifty. Um, we followed the same approaches we did for section B in the design. Uh, we repurposed available low-volume, low-speed frontage roads as buffer separation uh, from the southbound travel lanes of New Hampshire Avenue. Uh, where there were no adjacent frontage roads, again, a grass or paved buffer was provided between the bikeway and the southbound travel lanes. Uh, bikeway facility types include shared-use path, again, a, a southbound shared lane with a contra-flow bike lane within the frontage roads to remain, um, or a dedicated two-way bike lane where the frontage roads could be eliminated. Other key features, um, include ADA-compliant upgrades at intersections and bus stops, traffic signal modifications, again, the APS CPS upgrades, uh, this time at five signalized intersections. Um, and also the, um, the lighting upgrades, um, as I mentioned, for section B. So I'd like to now take us, uh, segment by segment through the section A corridor. So the, uh, the first segment of section A, between Auburn Avenue and Larch Avenue, will reduce the width of the frontage road to replace the four-foot wide sidewalk with an eight-foot wide shared-use path uh, and a two-foot wide typical paved buffer. Uh, the frontage roads, um, southbound travel lane will remain, uh, with minimal impacts to street parking within these limits. So for the bikeway between Larch Avenue and five hundred feet south of Sligo Creek Parkway, um, this is adjacent to the Montgomery Parks property. Um, we're proposing a nine-foot wide shared-use path and a three-foot wide buffer. And you may recall from the semifinal design that we had proposed three large retaining walls to avoid grading impacts. Um, however, Maryland State Highway Administration required these walls be removed due to cost and maintenance concerns. Um, and so follow-up meetings were held with city staff, Maryland State Highway Administration, and Montgomery Parks, and, uh, we were able to achieve consensus to grade out the slopes, um, and work through the, the proposed tree impacts and, uh, still maintain that wider, uh, than minimum shared-use path of the green buffer shown here. So for the northern limits of the Maryland National Capital Parks property approaching Sligo Creek Parkway, um, shown here, the design continues, again, with that nine-foot wide shared-use path, uh, with a three-foot green buffer. And at the Sligo Creek Parkway intersection, um, a shift east of the southbound New Hampshire travel lanes is required to retrofit a ten-foot wide shared-use path with a two-foot paved buffer. So you've got your southbound travel lanes, there's a, there's a shift to the east or to the bottom of the page, um, again, to accommodate this wider path, including at the bridge structure. Um, so modify- like, it's that modifications, um, to New Hampshire Avenue Bridge over Sligo Creek are also required to accommodate that, uh, the wider bikeway to retrofit. And for the bikeway between Glenside Drive and, and Kingwood Drive, uh, we're reducing the width of the median that separates the frontage road from southbound New Hampshire Avenue. This will accommodate a shared southbound travel lane and a northbound contra-flow bike lane. Uh, street parking between Glenside and Merlewood will be removed. Street parking between Merlewood and Kingwood will be maintained. So between Kingwood Drive and Holton Lane, our northern limit of section A, vehicular traffic will be removed from the frontage road and the pavement repurposed as two-way bike lanes. Um, this will also accommodate a thirteen-foot wide median along southbound New Hampshire Avenue to accommodate an, uh, ADA-compliant bus stop with a shelter, uh, providing more offset between transit users and the adjacent southbound travel lanes. And stormwater management for section A will be provided on-site to include two micro bioretention facilities, one north of Larch Avenue and the other near Glenside Drive. Um, there's also a stream restoration component on Parks' property that will allow us to meet water quality requirements for the project. Um, as shown in the earlier slides, the bikeway improvements will require fill grading on Parks' property. Um, in the same location, Parks requires repair to the failed pipe outfall shown in this image, um, and the, and the slope erosion, uh, that's also occurring. Um, the improvements will replace the existing failed pipe outfall with a drop manhole structure and a pipe extension uh, shown in this image here, uh, and it will extend that pipe and outfall closer to the stream. And the WUS is the Waters US and Stream designation here. And this slide, uh, shows the existing conditions of the stream, uh, and its outfall here. Uh, our, the project improvements, this is, this is in the planned view here, that same image. Here's your out, here's your outfall in the, uh, the silted and stream here. Um, the project, uh, will daylight the ten-foot segment of, of stream to the outfall um, that's currently filled with sediment and restore approximately a hundred and forty-five linear feet, um, of the stream. Section A requires the following impacts, uh, right-of-way from Montgomery Parks, um, and, and will be getting a construction permit from Parks. There will be no exchange of, of property, uh, or right-of-way acquisitions required from, from Parks. Um, WSSC and the Bright, and a small sliver from the, potentially from the Bright Lake Baptist Church. Uh, utility impacts require relocation of ten utility poles and, uh, removal of approximately twenty-four parking spaces along the frontage roads. So the project costs and next steps, um, section A has an estimated cost of three point nine million, and that includes utility relocations. Um, section B, a construction cost estimate of two and a half million, and that includes utility relocations. So next steps is for the city to secure funding for permits, right-of-way and construction, including those utility relocations. And this concludes the presentation. Um, happy to open up to any questions. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you so much. I, this is a project that I have been watching into long for a very long time, so we are really excited um, to see that we're at a point now where we just have to find the money. Um, so just wanna check to see if there are any questions. Well, I do have, have one question. So you mentioned the next step was to obtain funding for the design work, um, and permits and the like. Do we have cost estimates on that?
I don't have a cost estimate at the moment for that. Uh, I, I can get back to you on that, though, for sure.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful. Um, you might have heard earlier, 'cause I know we kept here all night. Uh, but we did vote on legislative priorities, and, um, one of the things that we, um, did decide to do was to move forward, um, with trying to get, um, legislative bond funds for the Metropolitan Branch Trail, but it would be really helpful, um, for us to have in our back pocket this specific ask for this project as well, because, you know, ask not, want not. Um, and so if there is, uh, possibilities for some state funds, it would, it would be ideal if we're able to at least know the numbers that we kinda need upfront.
Yeah, and, and RKNK is wrapping up their, um, design work right now, and as part of finishing up, they will be presenting us with finalized, um, construction estimates. And I will stress estimates, because any, any delay in when we, we get the estimate and when we start construction, uh, means that the cost will rise as materials and labor cost, cost rise.
Of course. Um, Councilmember Schlegel.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Mr. Gillespie. Uh, three questions, a quick, uh, first was one, um, about the bus stops. I, I saw, like, the ha- the good handling of the one at Kingwood and Holton. I just wondered whether there were any potential conflicts, uh, between the, the bikeway and the bus stop at Poplar Avenue and the bus stop, uh, near the seven-eleven at Ethan Allen, um, between, uh, Ethan Allen and, uh, and Auburn.
Yeah, the, I'm trying, the bus stop at Poplar Avenue is being adjusted, and those are, those adjustments are being, are shown on the, uh, the, the final plans, um, which have been submitted to the city this week, um, earlier this week. Um, and you said the other, sorry, the other bus stop.
In front of the seven-eleven on New Hampshire, uh, there's, it's tight space with grade changes between the parking lot and the street.
Yes. Correct, and part of the, so we were able to avoid that because we're shifting the southbound travel lanes in that area, and we're pulling the curb out so we can retrofit in that minimum shared-use path of the buffer in front of the bus stop, so we're not, correct. There's a steep grade there, and we're trying to, we avoided that.
Great, thanks. And moving north from there, in the MNC PPC forest, there's, there's a seasonal or maybe even permanent pond in there that's probably developed because of the, the break in the infrastructure. Is that pond going to go away now? It's kind of like a, it's, it's an, uh, accidental wetland.
I, I'm sorry, you're talking about the image that I showed, like, there were, um?
You showed, you showed flowing water, but down, down from there, there's often, like, standing water uh, for much of the year, and is that all gonna be re- regraded and s- such that there's an intake at the bottom of it and there's no more pond?
So that's further, you're talking about further south of our, of the outfall, where the pipe?
Further down, down slope, yeah, north, yeah.
Do you mean, uh, Councilmember, do you mean closer to Larch, or do you mean?
I mean, uh, down north of Larch, uh, if you walk down into the forest at the end of the service road, um, you encounter a, a pond at lots of times of the year, fairly sizable pond that's downslope from New Hampshire Avenue. And I, I wondered whether the, the alterations are gonna do away with that or keep it. I don't know.
I think that's the standing water that is because the, um, pipe there is in such deteriorated state that it gets blocked. It, for years, there was a flow of water across New Hampshire, which would then, in the heat of the summer, grow algae and be slippery, and it was like permanently, um, so the, the work on the outfall and stream restoration should correct that.
Okay, thank you. And the last question was just about one of the early slides that showed section D. It looked like it showed section D as now using Cockrell Avenue and then going up the very steep hill on Kansas. Has that shifted? I know that's not what we're talking about tonight, but I'd always thought that section D would use Fourth Avenue all the way to Westmoreland.
So the, the designs that we have so far for section D are very preliminary, and we had looked at a couple of different possibilities, but we are only at thirty percent on that.
Okay.
And it hasn't been determined.
Alright, thank you.
To Councilmember Schlegel, Councilmember Landman.
Just a quick question. In terms of the number of parking spaces that are going to be lost along the entire route, uh, and there were a couple places where, you know, a, a do- a dozen or, or thereabouts. When you were doing the public outreach, was there any section for which there was significant concern? or are those areas of New Hampshire Avenue where there's sufficient parking that none of the, either the businesses or the residents didn't mind, especially that one strip along next to this, uh, the strip mall where you are removing, uh, parking adjacent to the businesses? I just wanted to make sure that there was not a significant problem for the people that are either living there or have businesses there.
That location actually, um, has the most abundant parking of anywhere in the city. There's a huge lot behind, immediately behind the building. And so, um, the loss of those few places right in front of the businesses, I, I think is, um, can be covered elsewhere.
And what about the other stretches where, where, um, you know, ten or so spaces are that, is there ample parking along there so that residents did not, uh, have significant concerns?
I don't think I would say there's ample parking much of anywhere else in Tacoma Park, but, um, our early conversations with folks there indicated that it was workable. Um, and we have done broader outreach since then, but not specifically talked. The largest conversation we had probably was at the Prince Georges and Conway section, um, in that neighborhood and people were less concerned about the actual number of parking places than about the entrance and exit points and, and kind of smoothing down how traffic moves through that neighborhood, um, from New Hampshire. So we did not hear major concerns from others.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzup.
Uh, just a quick question, uh, this is probably a question for, uh, Ms. Grigsby. Well, would we need changes to our city policies on, uh, bikes and or e-scooters to accommodate those shared, uh, sidewalks? Or do we already, I, 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 I think the code reads and I'm sorry, I didn't go back and read it in detail, but, um, that, that, that the city is allowed to make exceptions for certain sidewalks. But I know that in, in, in a lot of these busier, um, roads, such as a New Hampshire or a Flower or Maple, you have a lot of e-scooters also. So I'm just curious, um, and I would imagine that would increase actually if we have these nice lanes. So, uh, do you see that as a pretty easy fix, uh, that we would do later?
I haven't looked recently at exactly how sidewalks is defined. These are referred to as shared use paths. So they're, um, multipurpose paths. They're not strictly sidewalks, but we can check that.
Okay, okay. So do you, so you imagine these holding, um, things like, uh, e, e-bikes and e-scooters probably as well, right? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you all again so much, Rob. We really appreciate the presentation and, um, the H C D team that has been working on this. We, we're really appreciative of all of the hard work that you all have been putting in over the years. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next up is the financial forecast preliminary results.
Um, good evening, Mayor and, uh, Council. Um, tonight, I'm very pleased to welcome Mr. Mike Burton, uh, the Executive Vice President of RevTalus, who has joined us to present the city's ten-year financial forecast. This is the second time RevTalus has assisted the city with a long-term financial forecast, which is prepared on a three-year cycle. This evening's presentation focuses on an interactive demonstration of the financial modeling process, highlighting how various revenue and expenditure scenarios influence the city's long-term fiscal outlook. The final financial forecast will be presented around February and the report will be included in the appendix of fiscal year twenty-seven adopted budget book. Now, without further delay, please join me in welcoming Mr. Mike Burton and the RevTalus team. Mr. Burton will be available to respond to questions from the council following the presentation. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me okay?
And now, thank you so much.
Okay, great. Uh, this, uh, Madam Mayor and, and City Council, uh, members, it's a pleasure to be here. Um, I have a presentation that I wanna make to you here and I know you're, you've got a long meeting that you've been dealing with all night, so I'll try to make it as brief as possible. Uh, but to be able to convey the important information that we need to convey to you tonight, um, we do have a presentation, but we also have a live model to the extent that you would like to look at any scenarios that we aren't showing you in the presentation. Uh, but given that you have a long meeting, if you'd rather do that in a special workshop type of session, that, that can be done also. Where you'd have more time to look at different scenarios that you might want to explore. Um, so, um, if, without further ado, I guess I'll go ahead and share my screen with you folks, if that's okay. And, uh, we'll just move forward here. Okay, I'm just using Teams, so I'm not sure, uh, which one of these to do.
It's the green arrow down in the middle of your screen. There you go.
But that's not sharing my screen.
Yes.
I don't think it is. Can y'all see that?
Yeah, we've got it.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, great, good enough, um. Okay, um, we're in Tacoma Park, Maryland. I'm sorry, did someone say something?
Yeah, Mike, hang on real quick. We got the, um, presenter mode. If you hit display settings up there at the top. You see that?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, hit, uh, duplicate slides, you know, or there you go, that works.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Yep.
Are you're just, you're not seeing all the notes and all that kind of stuff, right?
Correct.
Okay, alright, great. Um, well, first off, uh, who is RevTalus? Um, we've been in business for quite some time. Um, as you le, see on the right-hand side, um, we have, uh, over a hundred and, uh, eight, a hundred and eighty consultants. Let me see if I can do this, okay? Um, and we dealt with over seventeen hundred public agencies and utilities around the country and you can see the, the map of the United States up there. We're kind of all over the country. Um, and over on the left, you see the types of things we do. We look at finance, strategic planning and facilitation, organization, solid waste. We do executive recruitment, um, communication, technology and storm warning utility services. Um, so we've done a lot of this work. Um, I wanna show you about our team. Um, I, I'm Mike Burton, um, and I've been doing this for a long time, over thirty-five years or so. And really I've specialized in looking at general government financial planning and sustainability analysis. And have developed an interactive model that helps you clearly see graphically, uh, what the future may hold under different scenarios. Um, Will Carr is working with me, uh, on this project. Um, Will is a senior manager with the firm and Will, Will and I have worked together on several of these studies also. And Will has over twenty years' experience providing financial planning services to local government. Um, I didn't mention that I'm based in St. Augustine, Florida. Will is in Charlotte, North Carolina, but we both, uh, serve clients around the country. And then Mead Olson is a consultant who's working with us. He's been doing a lot of the heavy lifting and all the modeling. Um, and he's worked with us also on several of these types of projects. And so he's available with the model if you would like to look at it after we go through the presentation today. Um, the agenda, we're gonna talk about the key assumptions of preliminary results overview. Um, and we'll do a, a kind of a, not a real demo in this presentation, but a demonstration where we'll show you, uh, walk through different, a couple of different scenarios of tax rates going forward. Um, and then we're gonna look at the model assumptions that are gonna be presented on the following page that will be embedded in every assumption we, we look at with you. So the major assumptions in the model are that the O N M budgets, including the F T E vacancies, are soon to be executed approximately ninety percent. So, um, a detailed explanation will be presented on the following slide. But, but basically, you have been historically, um, spending less money, uh, than your budget on your operations, operations and maintenance expenses. So, um, if you look at it from a budgetary standpoint, uh, it looks differently than you look at it from a, uh, actual standpoint when you look at budget versus actual. And so we are looking at ninety percent of your budget for your operations and maintenance expenses. Uh, capital spending assumed to be at eighty-five percent of your capital budget, as it has been historically. Not many, uh, places can spend more than eighty-five percent of their capital budget because of various factors, permitting delays, weather delays, things of that nature. Um, growth is, uh, in assessed real estate value, which is what your taxes, uh, your property taxes are based upon, is assumed to grow at four point five percent in FY twenty twenty-seven, which is consistent with the city's FY twenty-seven budget forecast. And then at three and a half percent per year thereafter, to be conservative, we don't wanna overly project, um, revenues, uh, going forward, particularly in light of the uncertainty that we are looking at in, in our economy today. Uh, and there's no real property growth assumed in, in the forecast that we're looking at. Real property means that your new buildings that are gonna be built, uh, that weren't there before. Um, three million dollars was transferred in twenty twenty-six from the unassigned reserve to the, uh, to an assigned contingency reserve. And it's assumed to remain there in twenty twenty-seven. However, in our model, in twenty twenty-eight, we have reallocated it back to the unassigned reserve balance and it remains there in all subsequent years of the forecast. And I, I'll be able to clearly show that to you in the graphical representations we'll be getting into in just a moment. Uh, cable franchise fees and cable operating fee are assumed to decrease by seven percent in twenty-seven and in each year thereafter, based upon input from city staff. Um, operating expenses are assumed to increase by an average of three point nine percent annually, which is consistent with the historic range of inflationary rates. We have some, in, for different object codes, we may have slightly different, uh, uh, in, uh, inflation rates or increases in O N M expense, but overall, they're gonna be at about a three point nine percent average, uh, annually when you look through the five-year forecast. Budget execution, this is to explain that a little bit more. When you talk about operations and maintenance expenses, the city has historically executed, um, the general fund operations and maintenance budget at less than the budgeted amount. And historically, in recent years, it's been about eighty-five percent. So if you, if you budget a hundred dollars, you've been spending about eighty-five dollars. It's kind of what we're talking about there. Um, so, uh, you expect to, talking to city staff, uh, based upon things that you're, that you're looking at doing, you expect to execute it a little bit higher than historical, up around ninety percent, um, which was presented in the, in the prior slide and that's how we came to that ninety percent. Um, when you look at cities, we, I've done this in a lot of cities, uh, around the country. Um, you look at the execution commonly in the ninety to ninety-five percent range. Um, if it's really tight, you may get as much as ninety-seven percent. But this is not too inconsistent with, uh, what we would expect to see in a ci, city like, like Tacoma Park. Um, and revenues, the city has historically generated slightly more general fund revenue than the budgeted amount. And keep in mind, we're only talking about your general fund. We're not talking about any special revenue funds. We're not talking about any enterprise funds. It's just your general fund. Um, in recent years, that's been about a hundred and four percent of your budgeted revenues. So in the example I gave, if you were budgeting a hundred dollars of revenue, uh, you've historically, uh, actually achieved a hundred and four dollars. However, because of the, uh, uncertainties that we may be facing in our economy, um, to be conservative, we're not assuming there'll be any, uh, increase in revenues over what you budgeted. So that'll be included at a hundred percent of the budget. Okay, the scenarios we're gonna look at here, I'm gonna get into some of the model output. The first one is the status quo. Your current tax rate is point five five two two per hundred dollars of assessed value. Um, when you look at these two graphs, and I'll, I'll take a little time here on this first one to explain what these graphs are. This first graph is showing cash out versus cash in. Um, when you look at a city, there's a lot of complicated things that are going on, but at the end of the day, where the rubber meets the road is in cash flow. Um, how much cash are you spending versus how much cash are you taking in? And in this case, you're spending more cash over, over the years than you're taking in. And what that, what that reflects is an, is a decreasing fund balance. If you look at those lines over in, in the right graph, the, 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 the top line is the unassigned balance plus that assigned contingency reserve. So that shows all the reserves that you have, that you could potentially spend, uh, for anything happening in the general fund. The, the blue bar is your unassigned, uh, reserve balance, the blue bar is. And it's about three million dollars between that blue bar, um, and the, um, and the, and the, and the green line up above it. Um, the black line is the council's minimum fund balance requirement equal to seventeen percent of revenues. And as you can see, what's happening he, here is the, the, the fund balance is declining, uh, uh, to the point where in twenty FY, FY thirty, um, you're right at or slightly below the minimum requirement. And then in FY thirty-one, as you can see on the far right, uh, you go substantially below the minimum requirement. And all that's explained in this narrative right here. Um, and I won't read it again to you, but that's really what's happening up there. Uh, because you've had, you, you're, you're having a significant decline, uh, even with the status quo. So the next thing we looked at was another scenario that says, what if we have a reduced tax rate? And it's point five four zero zero. And if you did that and you looked at this, we got the same, um, callouts there explaining what's happening. Uh, we continue to have a, a negative cash flow. Um, and because the, you're, have less revenue now because you have a lower tax rate, um, on the right-hand side of the graph, you can see that the, the degradation in fund balance is steeper to the point where in FY thirty, it's considerably lower than the minimum requirement. In FY thirty-one, it's precipitously lower. It's getting down near, near a zero balance in those out years. And, and that all explains it right there, what I just described to you. Um, that, that you're, that you're gonna be looking at an even more, um, more dire situation in the out years of this forecast than if you kept the current rate. The next thing we looked at was the constant yield rate. And I think most of you know what the constant yield rate is, but it's a rate, it's, it's a, it's a reduction in the tax rate such that the revenue produced in the, in this year would equal the revenue produced in the fire, in the, in the prior year. It does consider the increase in the tax values, uh, when you do that. Um, and we did it only in the first year and then held it constant from, from, from there out. And again, you can look at the left bar, left graph and we got cash in versus cash out. And you look at the right graph and you can see that that line of gets even lower in the out years. You finally get to the balance in about FY twenty-nine and you get, um, even lower than thirty and, and down to zero in FY thirty-one. I might point out that, um, this is kind of like managing our personal finances. If you look at the left part of it, it's like your checking account. You can spend more money than you're, than you bring in in your personal finances. But if you do that, it has to come out of your savings account, which is what your unassigned reserve balance is. So it is kind of where the rubber meets the road on being sustainable long-term, uh, when you're trying to manage a general fund. Now, um, in order to maintain the council's minimum fund balance requirement of seventeen percent of revenues in FY twenty thirty and thereafter, the following two slides that I'm gonna show you show the tax rate increase that would be required in FY twenty thirty in the following scenarios, the reduced tax rate scenario and the constant yield tax rate scenario. So in the reduced tax rate scenario, uh, with a revenue adjustment, we're gonna, instead of, um, uh, excuse me, it's gonna be, uh, point five four per hundred in twenty twenty-seven. And then in twenty thirty, it would have to be, go up to point six two zero zero, uh, in twenty thirty to maintain the, the minimum balance. And I'll show you that in the graphs right here. You can see the cash out exceeds the cash in. And then you have a tax increase in FY thirty that, that would be assumed here, uh, which brings that, um, that fund balance back up to stabilize it. Uh, so it would be, uh, slightly above or at the minimum council balance. So, uh, it's not to say that you couldn't do this scenario, uh, now, but you would have to anticipate in the future, you may have to bring the tax rate back up, uh, to some point in order to preserve that balance at the minimum level. Then, uh, and that's all explained right there, um, what I was just telling you. The next scenario is a constant yield tax rate with a revenue adjustment. And so i- if you adopt a point five three one oh tax rate in twenty-seven, uh, in order to silence, you would have to raise that tax rate to point six three one oh in twenty thirty in order to keep that seventeen percent of revenue balance. Uh, and this is the graph again, and you can see the cash out exceeds the cash in. And you can see the, uh, tax rate increase in twenty thirty would cause the cash in to slowly exceed the cash out. And you can see over here that that does stabilize the fund balance, um, at or above the, the minimum balance requirement in those out years. And that is, uh, explained in what I just told you right there. So I know I kind of went through that fast and I'll open it up to questions, uh, and hopefully we have the proper answers for you. So, um, uh, I'll just, uh, turn it over to, to you, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you so much, um, uh, Mike and, and team. This is, uh, Great, thank you so much. Um uh Mike and and team, this is a very sobering. Um presentation. Um. One question I have, um and if I'm remembering correctly, um. There were in the past some scenarios where we were kind of looking at um. Our capital and like the um equipment replacement reserve funding and the like. I could be totally making that up. Because I am very sleep deprived. But I've flown across the country and had to wake up at three A M. Um so. When we are talking about the, I'm just trying to get a firmer handle on the expenditures. So when for the assumptions in terms of um expenditures, are we, you know. Keep are we taking into account just trend trending current expenditures to date? Or are you all also thinking about um when certain equipments and things that are within the city would be. Need to be replaced in the cadence for that? Um because I seem to remember. One of the prior forecast uh analyses that we had kind of showed. How we were we were really underfunding um in terms of our equipment and capital expenditures and and. That we were also on the path of not having or of hitting that that cliff, right? Um and so needed to raise the taxes a little bit to try to move us out of that space. And so I'm trying to. Think about whether or not it is a less spending issue. Um and are there some things that maybe we should have some conversations with the city staff about in terms of cutting back? Or is it that we have um city operations that are just gradually getting more expensive with time? Um just trying to to think through that balance, um especially given the fact that our our revenue sources are quite limited.
Madam Mayor, that's a good question. And we do have all the capital improvement program in this model. Uh every project that your staff has identified that you're gonna need to spend money on year by year. From twenty seven on out through the end of the forecast and all of those are being funded in this model. We're also um having uh transfers to those um the E R R, I believe, the couple of funds that you just mentioned. Uh that are being budgeted to be transferred in this model also. And you can fund all your capital program. Uh with with this uh at an eighty five percent, you we if you we're not ex- we're not including capital at a hundred percent. We're including an eighty five percent, cuz that's what you've historically uh done. And and all of that can be funded within these these programs. Now, you ask eh where do you go to solve the problem? Well, um you can go to reducing expenses to the extent that that may be possible. Uh you can go to increasing revenues. Those are the those are the kinda two things you can do. And I will say this, that if that execution percentage that we're talking about on O N M expense. Was more like the eighty five percent that has been historically and not the ninety percent. Then you would have a a higher level of net income and your your fund balance wouldn't go down as 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 precipitously. As as it's shown in those graphs. Um so um eh 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 the part of this could be a budgeting issue. We talked about. Uh we talked to the city manager a good bit about um, you know, um. Will help me with this. What 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 was the term that the city manager was using when we were talking about the the relationship there? Between the balance and the budget? Structural, it was it was a it was a structural issue. Structural imbalance, that's what the city manager was referring to. Um structural imbalance would say that i- if you look at your budget as it is without applying those percentage executions to it. It looks like you're gonna have a pretty dire uh future loo- looking forward. But historically, that isn't what hap- wasn't what's happened. You spent a lot less money than you budgeted and really from the last time we did this study, your your reserves have actually increased. Um so it's a it's a matter of how much you actually spend. So um in the future, would you wanna look at your budgeting process to see, can we can we tighten that up a little bit? But uh even if you didn't do that, if we got a realistic look at how much you actually spend on your budget versus actual. Um it would it would cause this to be better. So and the good thing about the way you do it, you look at this every a couple of three years. And so um eh if you looked at this in another three years, this you may have spent a lot less money than we're projected. Uh on your budget and so you may um be in better in a better position than we're projected here. So we're trying to be conservative. Uh to give you a look at this, to say you have enough reserves uh to go forward for the next few years. Uh but depending upon how things shape out, how you how much money you spend of your budget. Uh how things happen on income, if your income taxes stay the same, uh all your other revenue sources, cuz this includes all the general fund revenue sources. Um then you would update the the analysis and and it may look better than what we're having here on the graphs today, so.
Good for that. Um city manager Vesperdo, did you wanna weigh in?
Yeah, uh yes, can you hear me? Um I yeah, I wanted to weigh in just a little bit. I think that uh Mike has uh picked up on a number of the things uh that I was going to comment on. But let me just say, one of the things we asked the consultants to do was to really do a historical review. Of ours uh spending patterns. And I think that uh you know, we can certainly look back and see what revenues we got. But what was the execution rate of operating um you know, operating expenses and uh. Capital to try to get to a more realistic picture of how much is actually spent. Uh cities, many cities will budget at a hundred percent and find themselves at the end of the fiscal year and closing out their books. Uh sitting on a fair amount of uh balance. And one of the things we wanted to see, particularly because we know we've been so close to the line. With respect to how we have been, I think the last fifteen years needed to use some degree of. Um unassigned reserves to help balance the budget as were required, is to see truly what has been our execution rate. And I think that can and 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 more and more cities are going this way. I I I know Mike uh would agree that you. You we 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 did this, mayor council agreed to do that for personnel with the current FY twenty six budget. Where we had proposed a s- a lower amount. So that shows the uh essentially, I just wanted to add a little bit of context. And you mentioned E E R, Equipment Replacement Reserve Fund. Uh one of the premises here is that it would be fully funded at the one point one million. Of course, that's up to council.
Like what you've described, just in terms of practice is, you know, I've been on council now for what, like eight years? And is what I've seen just happen here in the city as well. We vote to lower the tax rate. And then a couple of years later, we end up having to raise it higher than it was before. And it's it's kind of like a bit of a yo-yo. So one of the things that I've been really pushing since being on council is to have it be a little. More bringing a plane in for a landing versus this jumping up and down, but. It still doesn't help the fact that the long term trend re- require us to to figure out something a little bit more. Sustainable over time. Uh council member Landman?
Thank you. Um this was very helpful. Um. Uh and you will eh hope I hope you will forgive me if this is a question asked in ignorance. I was really bad at. Economics in college. Um and um. What would be the effect on the on the on the trend line? Uh I know you were just talking about um lowering capital expenditures um for a year or two. But what would be the effect of a diet in the short run on on the long term trend line? Would that advantage us? Um would it affect the long term trend line or would it just basically save us money this year? We can't you can't necessarily bank it the way you could if you were a family, could you? Or could it?
It it would affect it. Um and if you if you would like it, we can take just a quick minute and and I can let uh Mead. Bring the model up and we can just show you a little bit of the sensitivity that we can show you. So that if you do have a more extensive workshop on this, we can show you the kinda things we can do for you. Um Madam Mayor, would you like me to do that? It wouldn't take but a few minutes to do it.
I think that would be helpful. I think we have enough newer council members that didn't have the 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 privilege that some of us old timers had. Stay around with your tool and ask questions.
Well, let me uh Mead, can you uh, I'm not sure how I get out of this uh screen sharing. Let me get out of the. Oh, here we go. So I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and I'm gonna ask Mead to share his screen. And he's gonna have the model working.
I can do this hypothetical to test out.
Okay, we're seeing this the model now. And and Mayor, to your point, we only showed those top two graphs. But the bottom graph on the left shows the capital improvement program and it shows that in the middle bottom graph, you don't need any borrowing at all. And just this um, Mead, can you save that scenario or you or do you have it where we can do that in this one? Can you bring those um bodies back in? Alright, and what he did was he saved those black bars in that right in that upper right graph. The black bars are the same as the green bars. So when we change this, you can see the difference in what happens. So if we just take ninety percent and let's just say it was eighty eight percent instead of ninety percent. And eh for personnel and other, and calculate the model. You can see that has a pretty dramatic effect on the curve. So you you would still stay above your fund balance in the out years. So um. Staff efficiency in terms of being able to perform at less than what your budget helps this curve. Eh I think um eh was that councilman council member Landman, were you the asking that question?
Well, I think, well, let, I mean eh if we just, if the city just decided to not engage in a construction project. That was gonna cost one point five billion dollars next year and didn't spend that money, what would that do to the budget?
Okay, well, let's take it back to ninety percent then and let's do that. Can you calculate it again? Wait a minute. Meade, calculate it again so it comes back to where we were. Okay, now it's back where we were and now go to the capital improvement program. And say that. Wait a minute, you can't have a negative number there. Um I'm sorry. You'll just have to pick a project. Say, let's take that. That this one points uh any one of those and just subtract a million dollars from it. It'll still have a positive number in the cell. And then when we go back over to the to the graph and we calculate that. You'll see that that um. That is that's reduced there, but I don't know why it didn't reduce the curve. Mead, what do you think's going on there?
You may have to dig into that. Um oh, I'm not think I know what I did. Sorry. That was that was pulling out of the Equipment Replacement Reserve.
Okay, that was.
So if we decrease this. Oh, jeez.
Let's see if that does it. Okay, so now you can see the reduction in the bottom left hand graph, if showing that. The black bar is what it was before and the and the blue bar is what it is now. It's a million dollars less. And you can see in FY twenty seven, uh up in the upper right hand graph, that that blue bar is higher than the black bar. And that stays with us throughout the whole forecast. So it it helps some. Um but it didn't help as much as your eh is the is the is the effect on your O N M uh. Execution rate because O N M costs are a a very large number and that's only a million dollars coming out of the capital program. But anything you do to reduce costs, whether it's in the capital program or in your O N M costs. Will make that curve be more palatable to you long term, so.
And Mike, if if I might add, um you you know, the the trick with capital is that. You you know, if the project has to get done, um then it then is the project getting completely removed from the C I P. And not being done, you know, anytime in the next five to ten years, or is it just getting removed from one year? And moved to the next year. And I think that 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 kinda gets into what Mike was alluding to at the end where. You know, with the operating expenses, those savings can kinda compound over y- over time. Um you know, to the extent if you're if you're not um execute, if you've got a lower execution percentage on your budget. That that can compound over time. Um whereas capital is sort of, I kinda consider it these blocks that just sort of move. You know, year to year um and. You certainly. You certainly can save, but um the the question is, is when and do you have to pay for it later?
And and that is uh and well, thank you for that. And I was gonna ask or a follow up related to that. Because what we've seen historically is depending on the type of capital project, delaying might actually impact the the overall cost of the project. Unfortunately, things don't typically get cheaper with time. Um and we've seen that. And so sometimes delay in capital could mean more substantial infrastructure work that needs to be done. Or just the overall cost of construction can increase over time.
Mayor, that's a really good point. And in our model, we have your capital improvement program input in today's dollars. But when it goes into the calculation of the model, we're escalating them at three percent a year. So if a project happens in five years, uh it's getting three percent every year escalated to the number that we took in the C I P. So that was a really good point.
Just second C. Uh council member Schlegel.
Thank you. This is a, if we could try one other thing with the with the tool, um this would be working in the opposite direction. One of our council priorities uh in this term has to do with the uh continuing efforts to get. A a new rec center for our community and um. The uh I was wondering what happens if we add debt service for that. Um because this might help us think about how hard we need to be arguing for uh support from other levels of government. Um so like right now, our our library project, I think it was a nine million bond and we have three hundred ninety thousand per year of debt service. So you know, what if we got lucky, got a bunch of support with grants and stuff, but still had to take out roughly nine, ten million dollar. Bond and say that we were paying four four hundred K per year on debt service. What would that look like over the next few years?
Yeah, we we can show you that. Um Mead, go back and put that eh eh what you took out back in. And then we have that project. Now, where is it? Okay, that we have that rec center in there. What year would you be talking about doing that and how much money do you wanna look at?
Uh let's say that something didn't come through till FY twenty eight, but at that point. We took on four hundred thousand a year in new debt service.
Well, no, let's look at what the cost of the facility would be cuz our model will calculate the debt service.
Oh, uh fifteen million? Is that about right, Mayor Thirsty?
I would probably use twenty.
Okay, twenty, thank you.
Your debt service should come out to probably close to two million dollars.
So Mead, are we still we're still forcing that one to go to debt, right?
But could we could we assume that maybe one third of that came from other sources? Could we say it's a twelve million dollar price tag for us? Or is that unrealistic, Mayor Thirsty?
Madam Mayor or? I would just say if we weren't in the current political climate that we are in, I would say sure. We could phone a friend, get a nice, good federal earmark, but that's not the place that we're in right now. So um I I I don't wanna necessarily assume that there are gonna be resources external. Extensive external resources available.
Okay, so what if we valued engineered and got got seventeen million dollar uh debt debt that we gotta pay back?
Okay, let's put seventeen instead of twenty. And if you want to, um Mead, um we can go to the borrowing tab to show him how that would shake out. Um and you need to calculate the model probably to have this happen to show it right. So the debt service on that would be, um we got thirty mi- thirty year term up top. For six at a six percent interest rate. Um and that would be one point, can you make it a little bigger so they can see it? Be one point one seven million dollars of debt service. And that's folded back into the financial analysis. And when we go back to that first decision panel. Um where you can see what happens, um is that's a big project there. And you have the long term borrowing showing in the bottom middle graph of a of a little over fifteen of whatever it was, seventeen million dollars. And you can see that after twenty twenty eight. If you if you can use your cursor to show them, the blue uh no, up in the upper right hand graph. That debt service is causing your reserves to be pulled down from compared to the black line from then on. And and so you can you can see the impact right there. And it does have the cumulative effect each year as you go through the through the years.
Okay, thank you. That's a good reality check. Thank you.
So we'll take that out so we don't ever leave it in unless you want it there. And now we're back to where we started from. Now, this is the graphs you're looking at there is with the current um tax rate. Okay, it's not with those lower rates, just with the current rate on this graph right here.
Um, Mike, just remind me, the um. Does the staff have access to the modeling to play around with? Or or do do we work with you all if there are folks that after they've had a good night's sleep have a a question about a potential scenario?
Well, you work with us. This is an Excel model. It's not a compiled program where you if you get in here. It's so easy to make make it something wrong and just blow the model up. So it's really the uh we don't really ever, I mean, we 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 help you with it. We'll look at whatever you wanna do with it. And it really isn't something you'll use on a monthly basis like you would in a, you know, an accounts receivable system or something like that. You'll look at this once a year probably when you're planning your budget. It's really a decision support process where we help you with it. And and part of the the advantage of it is that our facilitation of this analysis. Because this is what we do all the time. And and when you look at staff, the city managers, the city manager, the finance director. They're all busy doing what they're doing now. And to and to gain the knowledge of working a model like this, um. Would be a a pretty big big task for anyone. And it's just, I think, better to have us facilitate the process. And it's not really that very expensive really because we're pretty efficient when we do this kind of stuff. The model's here and we got it all set up to do these real quick ad hoc scenarios and it can happen real quickly soon.
Great. Thank you. So I'll just ask the um the city manager uh to follow up and um. Communicate to the council if there's a process that you all would prefer. If after tonight's discussion, there are some scenarios or questions that folks may have. Um, that we would like for Raf tell us to to run through the model and and give a a spit out of the results.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that. And just a reminder, as uh Mr. Burton said, they'll be back early next year. For a follow-up uh conversation with us.
Excellent. Wonderful. All right. Well, thank you all so much. Sorry I kept you all so late.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunities. No worries. We're used to it. So I guess we'll we'll go ahead and sign off then. Are we done for us?
You you are done.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, y'all.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, next item, community and council budget survey results. And and I do just want to, I know that we this will naturally merge into the work session. Um, topic of the council budget priorities. And so what I want to just in light of the hour. Um, to encourage council to use this as an opportunity to learn more about. What the community has said about um budget priorities and get an overview of what some of your colleagues may be. Um, thinking in terms of um the budget. Um, but we will have an opportunity to do a deeper dive in terms of developing the council budget priorities during our work session next week. Um, so with that, I will turn things over. Ron, are you taking this one over?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
All right, go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, I am Ron Carelli. I'm the City's Budget and Accounting uh Manager. And I would now like to do a um. A presentation for the uh Community Budget Survey for um fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. Okay. So just before proceeding, I'd like to um just mention that. Residents were asked to provide uh follow-up comments for some survey questions. Um, those individual comments provided by residents are not included in the presentation due to time constraints and for. Not wanting to include only some comments in the presentation and leave some out. However, the city will be um. The city will be posting the full survey results, including all those individual comments uh provided by residents. So that everyone can have a chance to uh review at their leisure. Okay, these are just some important uh budget dates. Um, some of these dates are in the past, but uh we thought would. We we wanted to show the full timeline from when the surveys were released to. Right up to when council would be voting on their budget priorities resolution. So uh the surveys were released in October. Um, the council survey results were due on November five. November twelve, the community survey results were due. Um, November seven, two days ago, we had the community budget forum. Today, obviously, we've had the uh presentation of the financial forecast. Um, all night of the presentation for the community survey results and then followed by the presentation for the council. Um, budget survey results. Council will have their first work session for their budget priorities following those presentations. On December three, council will have their second uh work session for their budget priorities. And on December ten. Council will be voting on their council budget priorities resolution. All right, so there are three hundred and sixty respondents to the community budget survey. Residents were asked to state which ward they reside in and as we can tell from the slide. Thirty percent said they reside in Ward one, sixteen percent in Ward two, thirty percent in Ward three. Nine percent in Ward four, eight percent in Ward five and four percent in Ward six. Three percent of the um respondents to this particular question were non-residents. And the reason given for participation was that they either had family in the city, uh property in the city. Um, they were employed in the city. Or their uh property was just outside uh city border um city borders. And they often visited the city for either for business, um recreation, socializing or shopping. Um, residents were given a list of major initiatives as the city planned to undertake in the next. Ten to five years and asked them to uh prioritize those initiatives. The uh top prioritized initiative was retention of of existing affordable housing. Uh, next was improved traffic, pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements. Next was advanced sustainability and green energy initiatives. That was followed by promote and incentivize construction of housing units, market rates unaffordable. Next was expand community policing, followed by replace or relocate the recreation center. Residents were provided with city councils' fiscal year twenty twenty-six priorities. And asked to select their top three priorities from the list. The top selected uh priority with a rating of seventy-five percent was fiscally sustainable government. Next with a rating of sixty-three percent was engaged, responsive, service-oriented government. Next with a rating of fifty percent was housing and community development. That would lead to improved and equitable quality of life. Next with a rating of forty-nine percent was environmentally sustainable community. That was followed by advancing safety and belonging with a rating of forty-seven percent. Residents are also given a list of programs and services that the city provides. And we're asked to um select the services that they use the most in the past year. So just to name the top five, um. The services, the service that was selected as the most used by residents in the past year was solid waste. And recycling pickup. Uh, next was city elections and voter registration. That was followed by library services, computer center and printing services. Next was social media, newsletter and website. That was followed by public art and performances. Again, just to um just to list the uh top five. Uh, residents were provided with a list of options that the city can. Use to maintain a balanced budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. Uh, residents were asked to um. State their preferred um option that they would like to see the city use to maintain a a balanced budget. The top preferred option was for the city to maintain its services at the current level with a score of fifty-five percent. Next with a score of forty percent was to reduce or eliminate certain services and programs. Next with a score of thirty percent was to increase program and membership fees for city programs. Next with a score of eleven percent was to increase real property tax rate. Followed by none of the above with a four percent uh score. Um. Staff would like to. Thank all of those who participated in the survey and voice their preferences and suggestions for the upcoming fiscal year. Twenty-seven budget. Staff would also like to acknowledge and express their appreciation for council members' outreach and. Encouragement of residents to participate in the survey. Uh, at this point, I'll be happy to take questions.
Uh, thank you. Thank you so much, Ron. I I appreciate all of the work that went into the community survey. Um. I I can kind of kick us off. I think one of the the challenges for me um with reviewing the data. Although valuable, was trying to determine the generalizability of the results. To the broader community. Um, one thing that stood out for me was. Um, that the most used um service reported. Um, and I believe it was seventy-six percent um was trash pickup. Was it seventy-nine or seventy-six?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. Um, it was trash pickup and recycling. Um, so that was an indicator for me. Ding 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 renters nor condo folks are here. These are all single-family homeowners. Um, and so um, and it's not a bad thing. I don't think that's a a bad thing at all. Um, but I do think that it is important to make sure that we have the right caveats around. Um, the data and understand the limitations of the data. Um, and and not only the ward distribution. Um, but we don't have any data around the demographics of the residents that responded. Um, so we don't know if um and it would be valuable and I'm I'm. Talking myself more and more into we need to dust off our community survey and do another community survey um to get some updated data. Um, but I do think that that this is helpful with the necessary caveats, right? So um, one of the things that was surprising for me, even though in the back of my mind, I kind of knew who was responding. Um, was the fact that when the question was raised about the tax rate, there were some that said keep it the same. And then there was fewer that said lower it, right? And I said, oh, I feel heard. This is a difficult decision and even the members of the community are trying to balance those things. Um, but I I do just want to make sure that we're all keeping these results. And the limitations of the data in the backs of our minds when we are trying to. Use the data in a way to kind of help inform council decisions. Um, I I I just wanna put that caveat out there. Um, because I do think it's important for us to not assume that the results here are generalizable to. You know, a broad swath of residents within our community. Um, Councilmember Schlegel.
Uh, yes, absolutely, Mayor. Um, it's uh, I think you you raised the the really important point about. How do you get renters um input in the budget process on a similar level? I wanted to ask, knowing how and it's 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 of a broader pattern, but just seeing how. In part because of the distribution of homeowners and renters, we have much lower percentages of participation. Um, from the wards of four, five and six. Um, somewhat lower about about half as much as from Ward two as from Ward three and one. I wonder, remember when the brick and story study was done for the rec center? How they waited, they were able to do waiting for um. Sex like the areas that were that had lower participation response rates. And they upped the value of those responses for things like pie graph results. It um, Mr. Koali, do you think that might be possible to do here? To to adjust, I wouldn't wouldn't do anything about um. Rent versus homeowners because we didn't get that identification, but at least from the geography of the wards. We could see whether there are significant variations in the wards in terms of what people's feelings or priorities are.
Councilmember Okun, we can definitely take a look at uh what was done with the previous study. And try and see what we can do um with this survey to um. To get better information, to be able to make uh better decisions for the project. So, who's up and take take a look?
Thank you.
So, Ashley, I will say I looked at the data and I thought about that as well. Um. The challenge is that um. The ward counts for some wards are so low. Um, that you are introducing more uncertainty by um. Putting more credence on what could really be a very, very, very small. Um, but but have intense feelings about this topic. Group of people. And and I'm saying, we're not talking about, you know, seventy-five. We're talking about maybe five. Right? And so you you want to be careful, even if you were applying waiting. Typically, you would apply, you would think through the waiting strategy of the statistical analysis that you're doing. As you are doing the survey distribution. Um, and so you may do things like try to. Oversample or overreach for certain communities, really try to get them to show up. So that you're able to try to balance it a little bit more on the back end because you know they're probably not gonna submit responses. Um. I I don't want us to spend too much time trying to make what is a um. An appreci- I appreciate residents and their time. I think there are some things. Um, that you can glean from the results generally. Um, but I don't want us to have staff spend a lot of time trying to analyze and make a data set that. Quite frankly, is um in terms of how things worked out is just fundamentally flawed. But I think that we can walk away and say, hey, you know, you know, there's some something to be said. That over three hundred residents cared enough to to respond to this survey. Um, they are, you know, we can kind of glean um certain characteristics of of the residents that responded. And we are able to kind of glean some of their thoughts and for. You know, council members in particular wards where there was a little broader representation, you may be able to do a little bit more. With your ward data than perhaps some of the council members from some of the other wards where the responses response response rates were a lot lower.
That's totally fair. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor, for all of his thoughts.
Yeah, no worries. Councilmember Landman?
Uh, you know, I think that you are um, what you were saying about trash collection. Uh, you may be presupposing that people know the difference between who's picking up the trash in their buildings uh that. I I'm not sure that that people draw that distinction about who's picking up their trash and uh. I'm not sure that that people draw that distinction about who's picking up their trash and uh uh you think they do? I.
Oh, they know, they know. I've talked to too many folks in multifamily buildings. I've talked to lots of people in condo communities who are upset about the fact that they have to pay for private companies to pick up their trash. They know, they know that that landlord is the one that's walking around the property every day picking up trash because they know that guy, right? So I I don't want, I mean, I've I've just spoken to a lot of folks in our multifamily buildings, so I I'm saying they know that the the landlord typically is responsible for trash. Um for the larger, maybe some of the smaller um more boutique style buildings, maybe not so much. But for the the big ones, they they typically know because they have lots of tenant discussions about trash.
Well, I what I was going to say is that um I I've only got the, you know, the individualized responses from my ward. So I have no way, you I I haven't looked at the like the big, I guess they're all compiled. I haven't looked at the the uh appendix. I guess all of the individualized responses might be compiled there, but perhaps uh Mr. Ko- how do you pronounce your last name? I'm sorry.
Kelly.
Kelly.
Councilmember.
Uh but uh and I have not yet, but maybe you're able to say whether if you were to look ward by ward, whether there is actually a significant distinction between the kinds of responses from the different wards or not. I mean, we know we had a larger number of responses from certain boards, but maybe there is and maybe there is not a significant difference between the number of people who said A and the number of people who said B to the answers in the different wards. And so I don't maybe just make the assumption that if we were to, you know, look at all the answers from board one, they're completely, you know, skewed in one direction or the other compared to word four or word six or something. So, you know, I do, it's too bad. It's it's like consistent that we have a higher response rate in one word versus another, but I don't think it's necessarily the case that the the responses are going to be really different. So uh maybe we shouldn't necessarily draw that that assumption on it without doing an analysis. And I don't know if it's possible to do that or not.
Yeah, yeah, I I don't, I want to stress that I'm not saying that the responses are different. I'm saying we don't have enough data to know. You don't know what they think. You have a very small number of people. Um and so you cannot generalize their thoughts. And therefore it makes it very difficult to try to generalize the results of this survey to the opinions of everyone in the city, right? There are some methodological ways that you can you can issue a survey to make that happen. Um but this was not done in that way. Um and so that that's the only caveat that I would say. I don't mean to in any way imply that the data isn't use useful for a purpose. I just want to make sure that we are very clear and and I will say back in, I want to say twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when the city did a community wide survey. And the reason why Councilmember Schlegel, you brought up the brick and story was because there was an online survey for the rec center. Um most of the folks who responded were from wards, you know, two, three, one, that don't use the rec center. And the results were very, we don't really care about the rest. Uh but you know, and and so it uh but there was such a low response from the people who lived immediately next to the rec center that we pushed for there to be more of an engaged process to make sure that the people who actually live there go have their kids go there every day were actually capturing their feedback. So I think and when we did the community survey back in twenty seventeen, that was done by an outside firm and they took an approach to try to make sure that the results would be generalizable citywide. And even then, we knew we were going to have to do focus groups, particularly for um some of our more harder to reach populations. So um I'm hard speakers and maybe some of our Spanish speakers to try to make sure that we're able to get their feedback because they're not going to necessarily go on a city website and complete a survey. Um and but again, it doesn't mean that these results are not useful. It doesn't mean that they're not helpful. I just want to make sure that that we kind of understand the parameters in which the data um is the the parameters and the constraints of the data. Um Councilmember Hanzak?
May.
Thank you.
Oh.
You just, the the assumption that you just made is an example. People in Ward one do use the rec center. Several of them have spoke to me passionately about their desire to make sure that the rec center is preserved and, you know, they're passionate ping pong players, for instance. Let's just not make assumptions about, you know, the data, even the minimal, a minimal amount of input from Ward five and six. You know, anyway, I'm just, I understand what you're saying about the data set being too, being too small to be valuable, but I just don't want to draw any conclusions about how it may differ or not from eh from the even. It's also a small data set from Ward one and I got a lot of complaints from people in Ward one about the design of the of the questionnaire as well. Gave them an opportunity to give meaningful answers uh in a way that they found useful. So I it's what it is and it's a useful tool, but it is by no means a perfect tool. I'll leave it.
Right. And and I will say, you know, in terms of the rec center, there's lots of data that kind of backs up what what was some of the data results that came back from from the rec center. There was multiple data collections about that. Um and and it's not a bad thing. There of course, there are going to be people users, but the the amount of users are not going to be the same as people who have young children that are in the basketball camps in the summer programs. There's just a difference in terms of the use. Um Councilmember Hanzak?
Thank you. I think this is such an important conversation. Um and and thank you. Um thank you so much to the staff for putting all of this together and thank you to the staff for answering the question that I sent by email yesterday and I said, don't worry, I'm not asking for an answer by tomorrow, but they sent us a partial part of my answer. So my question was this, um and it gets right to the heart of what you guys have been talking about, but I mean, as the representative of Ward five, I immediately took note that um if you lump four, five and six together, you can see that the response rate is still less than a quarter of the total responses and at twenty one percent, right? And so that's that's really, really uh something right there because because you know, if you had a representative sample across the city, it should be at least something close to fifty percent across those four, three wards. And we know, we know from um our demographic data that there are and some of our other characteristics, our socioeconomic data uh on wards four, five and six as compared to one, two and three. There are some sort of structural um differences there. And so I often, whether we like it or not, I often do, I find a meaning in lumping together four, five and six to get a sense of trends when we don't have all the data that we might like to have and it's hard to collect and it's expensive to collect. So I had specifically asked the staff if it might be possible, not necessarily by today, but um sometime in the near future to see four and four, five and six lumped together to get a little bit more utility out of the data. Um and I, if others find that useful, I um what we got, each of us got our our specific ward data. I was able to quickly cross reference Ward five data with um the overall trends and I'm happy to share that with everybody real quick if it's interesting. Um but honestly, I think because my sample size for Ward five, for example, is only twenty nine, it's not even thirty five, um which I consider to be a minimum sample size um for for utility of any kind. Um that uh you know, I think I would take like, like the mayor said, I would take it with sort of a bit of a grain of salt. But if you put four, five and six together, I think you might possibly see, you know, a little bit of something emerging um about kind of but and and if there weren't differences, I think that would be saying something, saying something interesting. I mean, and not, it's not an absolute conclusive thing, but it'd be interesting. Um so I mean, just really quickly, like just this will give you a real sense of Ward five. This is very quick. Um you can see in the in the twenty nine responses from Ward five, the recreation center relocation is one of the last priorities. Why do I think that is? I'm just, this is my own speculation. We have Long Branch Community Center look close to us. I'm always telling everybody, people in Ward five tend to, you know, we go to schools outside of the city, et cetera, et cetera. And so, you know, recreation facilities are often kind of uh not exclusively, but la- largely outside the city. So also we'll see a a difference in the overarching trend of the entire data data set on the um the top two priorities. The fiscally responsible government was number one also in Ward five, but number two was advancing safety and belonging, which was last in the priorities overall for the city. So very, and that's interesting. That's interesting to me. Um and um and then the other thing that I thought was kind of potentially interesting was um people said that uh in Ward five that uh, hold on, let me get this right. Um yeah, that 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 they're that one among their top priorities of how to, they they also agreed, again, very consensus with maintaining services um as a priority, but um they said if we're trying to figure out where to get money from, then their number two is different than the rest of the city. They said people should um increase fees for city programs. And their last option was to increase property tax. So again, again, a structural, you know, that that's that's different. It's notable. I think, take it with a grain of salt. It would be more interesting if we had qualitative data. It would be even more interesting also to see four, five and six together. Um and uh and I'm thinking that in the future, um I it could, you know, it could be very, very interesting to use a technique I've used in uh communities in in other countries when I do community surveys. Um where you work very, very, very hard to get um every, you know, a random sample that is very strategically selected. So you would say like every, you would take a map, for example, and you might go every, you know, twentieth house or every fiftieth household in this ward, we're going to chase, chase, chase that house to get the data from that household. And you could have a pretty small sample then from each of the wards and draw more representative conclusions, knowing that this is a problem that we often face in our city. Um that too has its own, you know, challenges economically and chasing data, but that can give you the kind of representation that's a bit um, you know, not so skewed uh that can sometimes be more enlightening. Um and I think that that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
And and I do just want to also, you know, stress that that this is not something, again, we can't generalize, we can't necessarily um be conclusive about it. And we also just need to be mindful of the fact of the topic itself and how um we didn't collect data about whether or not people are homeowners or not. Um but uh uh I will say, when I, when I was a renter, I was less concerned about the municipal budget. Um because I wasn't paying property taxes. And uh I was more concerned about what my landlord was going to say or what my landlord was going to increase my rents um to be. Um so it could also be the case that um just given the nature of the topic and the nature of the survey, it draws a certain type of of resident that is engaged and wants to um provide feedback. Um but again, I don't want to belabor the point. I think that we've we've had some really good discussion. Um and what we can continue to do is really, you know, as part of, as was discussed, the community navigator's work and the like. Um continue to have conversations about ways that we can engage um across our community and figuring out the best ways to to get information, that two-way um communication where we can get information in their hands, but also um have them provide information back to us. Um with that, I don't see any other.
Madam Mayor, can I, can I just um uh just uh earlier, um Ron had suggested that the uh the survey, the aggregate survey would be available later. It is actually um posted, so you all can take a look at the aggregate survey. It's online.
Thank you. Alright, so we're going to move into uh the council um priorities, budget priorities, um survey results and um our last item for the evening.
Okay, I am, still, may I also share my screen? Okay, so this is the fiscal year twenty twenty seven council budget survey results. Um similar to the community survey results, I have not included the individual comments from council members in this uh presentation for the same reasons I gave. These are the same dates we had in the uh previous presentation, so I won't go over the dates again here. Okay, purpose of surveys. The uh city launched its second annual community and council budget surveys in October twenty twenty five. The purpose of the surveys is to obtain preliminary input from the community and council for the development of the fiscal year twenty twenty seven budget. The council budget priorities resolution informed by the community and council budget survey is a vehicle by which the council can relay its budgetary preferences and priorities to the city manager. The city manager aims to reflect the council's direction and effectively incorporate those priorities into the fiscal year twenty twenty seven proposed budget. Just a reminder of the uh fiscal year twenty six adopted council budget priorities resolution. First was to continue to advance the city's housing efforts by updating and implementing housing policies. That is tenant advocacy, rent stabilization, support middle income housing and housing development. Next, continue to improve community safety, traffic calming and bike and pedestrian safety. And continue planning for the replacement of the Tacoma Park Recreation Center, including identifying potential funding sources and partners. Council included certain budget parameters in their resolution and those parameters include continuity of current fiscal year city services, maintain the adopted fiscal year residential real property tax rate of zero point five five two two, continue to explore alternative and additional revenue sources, including the impact of modifications to the commercial property tax rate and the railroad and utility tax rate, and maintain an unassigned reserve balance above seventeen percent of the projected fiscal year twenty six city revenues per the city fund balance policy. Council members were provided with a list of programs and services that the city provides and were asked to prioritize for uh fiscal year twenty twenty seven funding. The top prioritized service or program was housing, um including affordability, quality and tenant support. Next prioritized was immigration resources and partnerships. That was followed by community safety. Next was recreation programs, followed by economic development. Next was sustainability and climate resiliency. Stormwater infrastructure was next prioritized. Next was committee communications and public engagement. That was followed by roadway maintenance and sidewalk construction and maintenance. That was followed by pedestrian and bicycle safety. Next was traffic calming, followed by library services. Council members were asked whether city services and programs should be expanded, reduced or maintained. Uh one council member said expand services, two said reduce, four said maintain at current levels. Council members were asked whether the city should add resources to the fiscal year twenty seven budget for um services or programs that the city doesn't currently provide. And one of the examples provided was um whether funding should be provided to residents um for those residents who were impacted by federal actions. Um to that question, six council members said yes and one said no. Council members were also provided with a list of measures or funding sources that the city can use to achieve adequate funding to support city services. Council members were then asked whether those measures Council members were then asked whether those measures or funding sources should be kept the same, decreased or increased. For general fund unassigned revenue, six council members said keep the same and one said decrease. For future borrowing to support capital projects, four council members said keep the same, one said decrease and two said increase. For programs and potentially related personnel, five council members said keep the same and one said decrease. For residential real property tax rates as a revenue source, four council members said keep the same, three said decrease. For railroad and utility tax rates, four council members said keep the same and three said increase. For commercial property tax rate, five council members said keep the same, one said decrease and one said increase. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
You'll also find the aggregate for all the council members online.
Thank you. Council, thank you so much for this. Councilmember Schlegel?
Um, yes, I, I appreciate the aggregation of the results and also the attachment of narrative comments in the agenda. Um, I, um, as with last year's budget, I know you can't ask about, it's hard to group these things. But, um, if you could go back to the slide, is it, uh, Cowley? Is that how I pronounce your name, sir?
Uh, K- Kelly.
Kelly, okay. Thank you. I'll get it right now. Kelly. Uh, Mr. Kelly, if, if you could go back to the slide that showed the, the breakdown of the ten, um, the ten services and council members, uh, the tabulations of points for the ten services. Yeah, there, one of the things that, that I found difficult and I was curious about what my colleagues did was that in terms of things that are related to sustainability, um, there kind of feel like three categories. There's sustainability and climate resiliency. There's stormwater infrastructure and then there's pedestrian and bicycle safety. And, you know, I, I believe that adding those up, you know, you, there, there's so many different elements in those, but if you add them all as one category, um, they, they would get a bunch of points, like seventeen points. I just wanted to point that out as we go forward that it might be that if we look at all those as one cluster, we're in a year where we need to, um, pick within that cluster in terms of what gives the most synergy and, and what is the most urgent to do in FY twenty seven.
Thank you, council member. We'll definitely, uh, take a look at that. And when we, uh, design, uh, survey for, um, the next time we do this, we'll try to see how to factor your recommendation as to how we, uh, conduct this survey, conduct and design the survey.
Thank you. Uh, one other comment was that, um, it, it asks for prioritizing and I think to be realistic when we're, we're in such tight times as the Raftellus report showed, um, we probably should give ourselves the option to say de-prioritize, you know? Um, since part, like true prioritizing also involves de-prioritizing de facto. So, just a suggestion.
That's a good point, council member.
Yeah. Um, I will say that I, I struggled a little bit with certain, like, wanting to connect the dots between the certain questions, um, in terms of tax rate versus support for folks that have impacted by the federal action. And how do those things balance? Um, does it make sense, you know, once we have a better understanding of what, um, the impact of like federal workforce and changes in the federal workforce, does it make sense to lower a tax rate? Or does it make sense to budget for a program that would direct funds to those residents that are impacted in that way? And so that's, that's something that I have been, um, really struggling with trying to balance. Um, and also keeping in mind the fact that, uh, you know, what we just heard from Raftalas. So we need monies for our general services that we, for the most part, most folks feel generally we should maintain. But then we also have all of this federal uncertainty and things that are happening that we, I, I can only imagine, um, will likely get worse, not better, at least in the immediate future. And I'm talking about FY twenty seven. Um, so then how do you figure out the right way, um, to make sure that we're, we're putting resources to the side in order to be able to provide resources and support to, um, some of our, our, our residents that are in need, either immigrant communities, um, uh, residents or a number of our federal workers that are now unemployed and are struggling to pay a mortgage, right? Um, so those are some of the things that for me, as we start talking about the priorities, um, that I will be trying to focus on and taking a look at the survey, the, the, at the survey results as well.
So the good thing about hearing from, uh, you may, um, council members at this stage is that staff could, um, start to get a sense of, um, what you're thinking, what your preferences and priorities are at this early stage of the, uh, budget development process. And, um, um, discuss that amongst ourselves and try to see how we could factor that in as the budget development process, uh, continues.
Great. So that's, all right, well, we're gonna have, uh, a, a, we'll be able to revisit, uh, now that we've walked through and have tons of information, um, as we are engaging next, a week after next, um, on the, uh, budget priorities. Any other questions, thoughts?
I saw a hand from Councilmember Hanzak, but then.
No, I don't see it. She.
I did have it up, but I guess you didn't see it, so I decided that maybe you wanted to move on. No, is, I understood?
Yeah, I couldn't see it. I don't, I don't see.
That's okay. Um, okay, well, so I, um, but are we, but we're about to have our work session, so it could be part of that too. I mean, or maybe it feeds right in. Um, I was just gonna give my, my quick, um, overview. I, I wanted to share with, with the staff and my view, uh, with my fellow council members that the, I find this sort of, what I would call kind of a bigger picture, um, survey of the council members to be quite useful side by side with, uh, the budget survey and other things. Because, um, I mean, at the end of the day, we just, we just finished looking at our, uh, voter turnout, you know? Um, and our mail out ballots across the city to see who we are. You know, who, who are the council members? Are we, are we actually being voted on by a lot of our residents and, um, representative of those viewpoints? And I think ultimately we have really, we have really democratic elections in Tacoma Park. And, um, that data is meaningful because it means that most likely we're, we're pretty representative of the folks in our wards. And, um, we have a pretty good layout with our seven member council, with each of us having a vote and a mayor and, and it's for an odd number, et cetera. So the way I look at these results, um, you know, I, I really value that this, this look at this, um, from, from the big picture. And I think when we see the maintain, reduce, increase, um, what you're really looking at is, is kind of the general trend of the vote count, honestly. Um, if we get to a budget decision where we can't all agree, maybe there's sort of a general trajectory there. That's an interesting thing. Um, and then also, uh, I think it's sort of interesting. I, I think the, um, the, the segmentation, uh, when I look at this graph that we have up right now, there are, there are kind of some, some jumps, uh, if you group them together. Like if you group, you know, um, everything in the, in the six to seven range and everything in the four to five range. And then, you know, you jump down pretty far from at the very top to the very bottom. And I think that's, that's indicative of, of our, our, our values within, within the, our, our, our values within the budget. And, um, we are, we're likely to go with our decision making at the end of the day. And hopefully that's useful to staff. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. Okay, I think I now have the full list in case I don't see faces. Okay, seeing no more hands, um, we're gonna move to adjourn tonight's meeting. And thank you all, uh, for your patience as we tried to get through a pretty large number of items this evening. All right. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.